Right.
Right.
So how do they separate getting a new approval without that approval? Is that just?
Right, exactly. So it's like a mini adventure cross, adventure crossing, because it's like the total day. So in.
I think it's just something new.
Right, like we don't, they don't, right, it's not necessarily.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undebout, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This meeting complies with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been published, and the municipal bulletin board, and the applicable newspapers.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman.
Here.
Dr. Hofstein.
Here.
Mr. Hudek.
Here.
Mr. Rosal.
Here.
Mr. Martins.
Here.
Mr. Such.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here. Leave it to Jay. Do we have any resolutions for this evening?
We do not.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I think that one was sent over by Mr. Shea on the matter which I had a conflict. I don't know if the board has had an opportunity to review that.
All right, I did not have a chance to review it. Did anyone else?
Me neither.
So we're going to hold this one over for the next meeting?
Yes, you could do so. You're in plenty of time.
All right, thank you. Any minutes for this evening, Kathleen?
Yes, January 17th.
Fourth.
Okay. We have meetings for January, minutes, excuse me, for January 17th, 2025, and June 4th, 2025. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes, please.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein.
Yes, on the January meeting, no on the June 4th meeting.
You could just abstain.
Abstain, I meant to say.
Mr. Hudek.
Yes.
Ms. Rosal.
Yes, on the first one, and abstain on the June 4th one.
Mr. Martins.
Yes, on both.
Mr. Such.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes, on both. All right, I have two vouchers in front of me this evening. The first was for the zoning board clerk minutes of January 17th, 2024, in the amount of $100. And the second one is for tonight's meeting, June 18th, 2025, in the amount of $175 for our recording secretary. I need a motion and a second to pay the bills, please. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein.
Yes.
Mr. Hudek.
Yes.
Ms. Rosal.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mr. Such.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, I believe we have announcements for this evening?
Yes, so number one on our agenda, Douglas Phillips has asked that this matter be carried to the July 16th meeting. He will have to provide notice. He did not notice in time for this meeting. Number two on the agenda has been withdrawn in its entirety, and that leaves us to number three on the agenda, which is in the hall.
All right. No executive session for this evening. We'll have to swear in our professionals.
Sorry, can I just ask one thing? The last, the last one where it says will renotice, is that still on for today?
Yes, they did provide that notice. So they were told at the time that they would have to renotice, and they did so and have provided the notice.
Okay, thanks.
And for the professionals, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Please state your name and position for the record.
Mark Romeyer, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Do we have any matters for discussion this evening?
We do not.
Okay, and no administrative approvals. So we're going to move right along to applicant number three, Swanborn LLC, preliminary and final major subdivision 662-1 approval amendment. Mr. Junko?
Yeah.
Hello? Sorry. Anyway, thank you for having us back, and tonight, Mr. Borden couldn't be here, so Graham McFarland will be testifying. And I know that we were asked to make sure that he was here to continue cross-examination so we can do that, or of course, whatever you want to do is what we'll do in that sequence. But we're prepared for that, and also prepared to make a further presentation of the plans and some certain modifications. And I would have two witnesses this evening, Graham and John Ray, our traffic consultant. So if that's how you'd like to proceed, I will say that Mr. McFarland is now available for cross-examination. He was not, in my recollection, he was not sworn at the last meeting, so we need to swear him. And I'll offer his credentials, but I know you've heard from him before.
Yes. If you could, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And will you state your name and credentials for the record?
Sure, it's Graham McFarland, professional engineer, professional planner, principal of professional design services, previously qualified, testified before this board many times.
This board accepts your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McFarland is now standing for cross-examination in the continued hearing on behalf of the applicant.
So, Mr. Junko, you're not preparing, not, Mr. McFarland is not offering any new testimony?
No, Jean, or Ms. Cipriani, yes, we will offer additional testimony, and perhaps that should be done before the, renew the cross. But either way, when we left at the last meeting, you had asked to make sure that we were able to present and continue the cross-examination. Personally, I would recommend that we take this testimony and then do complete cross-examination at that point, but of course, it's your meeting.
With the permission of the chair, I'll just ask if the board members want to commence cross-examination of Mr. McFarland on Mr. Borden's testimony from the last meeting, or have Mr. McFarland start testifying now, and then you can ask him questions on this testimony or the testimony that was previously given. Hearing none, I'm going to suggest, Mr. Junko, that you start, and the board is.
And then put our testimony in now, and then can do cross-examination all at once.
Correct.
Okay, so with that. So, Grant, you have been familiar with this project, and you've been aware of its development and processing?
Yes.
And you were at the last public hearing?
I was.
Okay, now, based on that, is there additional testimony you want to present to the board concerning the application, and any, any modifications you may have made to the plans?
Yes, well, we're here tonight with some revisions since we were before the board last time, a couple of, a couple of months ago. There have been some, you know, a couple of minor changes to the plan, and we also submitted the, the final subdivision plans for review, which, which contain all of the dimensional requirements of the proposed lots. So up on the screen, we have exhibit eight, we have exhibit, I guess it's exhibit A1 with dated June 15th. Looks like June 15th, '22, right? Nope, '25. It says June 15th, 2022 on it, but I think it's supposed to be 2025. I think that's a typo. But anyway, exhibit A1 is an aerial show in the subject premises, which has not changed since we started this, this proceeding for the amended plan. Just shows the overall site, its proximity to the surrounding, to the surrounding roadways. A2, if you can go there, Anthony, I'll just, just go through this real quick. I know the board is familiar with it. A2 is the approved plan. That shows the, the original plan that was approved as part of the application. Most notably, this, this plan did have access out to, did have access along Denton Lane out to Whiteford Road, and that has been changed on this, on these revised plans. A3, just going through real, very quickly, is the, the proposed plan. That's now before the board, and you can really, you can see the two revisions are, are a cul-de-sac at the end of the roadway near Denton Lane, and this application no longer proposes the improvement of Denton Lane. Now, keep in mind that that improvement of Denton Lane would be classified as an off-site improvement. Mr. Ray, I believe, will provide some traffic testimony to confirm that the project still remains compliant with RSI's requirements, you know, without that construction of Denton Lane and without that third access point. So the application, as now presented, does show a cul-de-sac at the end of, that, end of, end of that street near Denton Lane, and it does not propose the improvement of, of Denton Lane. We also had some, just, just jump into one of the other technical questions that both of your professionals identified. Whitlock Avenue over here also has a cul-de-sac at the end of it that is in very close proximity to this road that loops around, which is called Mahogany Lane. And both of your professionals asked a question as to what the, what the method of improvement should be between that cul-de-sac and between that Mahogany Lane loop, loop there. I think that's a, that's a subjective matter that the board should, should offer some insight. Two, I can certainly understand both sides of the argument, one being that access should be prohibited so that somebody doesn't, you know, jump through the cul-de-sac to Mahogany Lane inappropriately. But the other alternative being that maybe there should be some emergency access or connection between those two to provide an additional point for, for emergency access. So I think that's a subjective matter, again, not, not really governed by, by RSI is. With or without a connection there, the project is compliant with RSI is. These plans have been reviewed by the Fire Bureau, and, and during its, its review, we never really got any comment from the Fire Bureau, one direction or the other, whether they felt strongly for one, again, for one solution or for the other. But we would be looking for the board to get, to have some discussion and give some direction as to how they feel that that should be handled. It is a little bit of a, of a unique situation, given the location of the cul-de-sac in close proximity to, to that other, other roadway.
So Graham, as a, as a designer, what do you recommend to the board?
Well, again, I think it's compliant either way. It's a, kind of a little, a very unique situation. I, I think we just need to have some discussion with the board, and let's see what the opinions are, and I think be, be guided by what the majority opinion of, of the board is and, and its professionals at that particular location. And then A4 is, is just the, frankly, it's the updated overall development plan, just showing those items that I was, that I was just highlighting. And then A5, very quickly, is something that we, again, need to have a little, a little discussion on. A5 shows all of the detention basins that are now scattered throughout the project. They're identified as small-scale infiltration basins in accordance with the new requirements to provide what's called green infrastructure design. I know the board has heard that term thrown around here in the last year or two years. Essentially, the, the process requires a lot of small-scale infiltration basins to be scattered throughout the development, and that is what this updated plan, plan shows. You can see we have identified, have identified them with, with two colors, with the pink and the green. Currently, our plan shows fencing proposed for the basins that are in pink. They are the larger basins that are a little bit deeper. The basins in green would be very shallow, they're general, they're generally about 18 inches to two feet deep. So we do not show fences for those basins right now. But again, similar to our discussion about the, the cul-de-sac of Whitlock Avenue, I, I don't think the ordinance provides a specific direction as to whether they should be fenced or not. It's a matter of personal preference, and to me, very subjective opinion, whether it's better to have or not have the fencing for those basins that are very shallow in depth and will only contain water periodically. So we would be, again, we would be guided by the, the opinions and, and representation of the board as to how, how and where to put the fence, and we'll, we'll put whatever fencing the board, the board wants, or the board doesn't think fencing is, is the best alternative, we'll be, we'd be happy not to have to erect the fencing as well.
Before you leave that point, Graham, could you just give a little detail about the topography or the slope around those basins that might influence whether or not a fence should be there?
Well, most, most important.
Mr. Junko, when, if you speak, when you would, if you would take the microphone, we can't hear you at all.
Do you need to repeat that? She wants, you could use the mic. Oh.
And I was using the mic when I said that.
I thought I was. I'm sorry. Okay, Graham, with regard to the fencing, could you perhaps discuss a little bit with the board some of the topography around the basins so that they could perhaps come to a. to a direction for you?
Sure, again, all the basins are, are very shallow, on the order of 18 inches to two feet at, at the mostly, the ones that are highlighted in green right now. They're all excavated detention basins, so they go below the, below the, the surrounding grade at their, at their location, very small footprints of, of about 2,000, 3,000 square feet that occupy small portions of, of the lots. And of course, all, all the components, all the detention basins and ponds will be owned and maintained by an HOA, well, they will not be owned or dedicated to the municipality. The drainage system within the public right-of-ways would be dedicated to the municipality, but the, the detention basins would be owned by, by an HOA. So any, any fencing associated with them would also be subject to ownership and maintenance of the, of the HOA.
And what type of fencing would you propose if the board chose fencing?
Well, again, it's, it's typical in this town that we've used post and rail fences with, with mesh, or we could use chain link fence, a four-foot-high chain link fence with, with mesh. I, I personally prefer the chain link fence because the, the wood post fences, they last about 10, 12 years, then they totally deteriorate, so I, I prefer a black, black chain link fence personally. But again, it's a matter of, a matter of personal preference.
On the much smaller, on the much smaller ones that you are not, you're stating that the basic fence isn't required, have you thought about shrubbery or anything? I know in other applications, that's been a discussion that we've had, rather than impose a fence, you know, shrubbery an option, is that something you've thought about?
That would cer, that would certainly be an, be an option. The, the flip side of it is that, in some people's minds, a shrubbery doesn't, doesn't provide maybe the safety measure that the fence is due from, from a small child. You know, the fence primarily provides a barrier for, for a small child, shrubbery would not provide that same level of barrier or of protection, but again, for these very small basins, there's no clear-cut direction, no guidance in the ordinance whether the fence is required or not, so I, I think it's really, again, a matter of, of personal, personal preference of the...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might, to either Mr. Junko or Mr. McFarland, can you refresh the board's recollection on the form of ownership of the stormwater management facilities for the project?
Yeah, they'll, they'll all be dedicated to the HOA.
So, in this particular case, it's not, our public works department has to go take care of them. While I'm not the board's engineer, I've been doing this a long time, and I can remember 30, 40 years ago, someone say, put a four or six-foot fence around something, and if a kid can get in it, that's great. Well, I'm 62 years old and overweight, and if I have to go find the gate for the fence, someone's going to drown. The laws exist for a reason so that everyone plays by the same rules. The state stormwater manager, regulations require stormwater management fencing for certain situations. I think there is a practical aspect of this about how you, as the zoning board, would like to see this project look. So, I forget, there are 10,000 square foot lots, 10,000 or 12,000 square foot lots?
10,000 minimum, correct.
Do we want to have a four-foot fence? Do we want to have a six-foot fence? Do we want to just say, you know, if it's something that's 18 inches or two foot deep, it's a swell, not unlike the swell it's in your backyard behind your swimming pool? So while the board does have the leeway to say, this is how we'd like the streetscape to look, or the project to look, at the end of the day, if, if someone's going to ask the question, what's the law say? Law says puts up, put up a four-foot fence. Now, you good folks have the opportunity to say, well, is four-foot fence the best idea, given the number of small-scale infiltration basins? These aren't the big old ones where we dig a, you know, a 300-foot-long and 100-foot-wide and eight-foot-deep hole in the ground, you need to have a fence around that. In these instances, these really aren't bathtubs in the ground, these are shallow depressions. So if we just want to say, well, what's the law say? Law says put a fence around. But at the end of the day, I do think you folks have the leeway to say, you know what, I, I think this looks good in our community, I think this also provides a certain amount of safety or practicality, given the type, the scope, or the density of the subdivision that we have here, which is why I give credit to Mr. McFarland, Mr. Borden, preparing a document that says, here are the ones that really need a safety fence around them, here are the ones that maybe do, maybe don't, but I'm not sure what the trigger is to say, yes, you need it, no, you don't. So when, when people who draft laws don't know the difference, they just say, oh, we get it. So, I apologize if that wasn't as helpful as you had hoped.
That's good, thank you.
Madam, Gina?
Yes, Gina?
I want to piggyback quickly off what Ernie had just mentioned. Not speaking in official capacity from the building department, but just an FYI to keep in mind, UCC stipulates that fencing is only required if the water depth is 24 inches or more. I don't know if that helps or hurts, but I did just want to add that tidbit of information.
Thank you. Mr. Sutch?
So what I was going to say about this, and because you mentioned the HOAs are responsible, and with these retention basins, they're only as good as your HOA. And living in a community where we have retention basins, and I'm president of our HOA, and we're actually faced with, they clog with the drainage over time, leaves, dirt, debris, and your retention basin at one point, which would only hold up to 24 inches of water at a time, ours have filled all the way to the top. And because over time, and we've had situations in our neighborhood where in the winter, they froze up a little bit on top, we've had kids, where I've seen, where I've had to go out there, and I've said to our management, we have kids out there on the retention basins, it's ice, I don't know how deep it is, we don't know what's underneath it, and we're, we're doing a project now where we have, you know, our landscapers coming in and they have to clean out the whole thing, I mean, we're, our community was built, I think, what, 2004-ish, 2006? So we're coming up to 20 years, but these things need to be maintained by our HOA. And if they're not, retention basins at once were supposed to be equipped to let water go out, now they're full. So me just kind of playing devil's advocate, I mean, you can't buy a five-gallon bucket right now without a picture on the side of it of a baby with a warning on it, in a five-gallon bucket, who could drown. So I'm just saying, where's the liability? And, and I understand what Mr. Peters is saying, I mean, for aesthetic purposes, look, I don't know, it's a, it's a tough call, because I mean, if, you know, God forbid, something happens, and it was over just a matter of saying, let's put a four-foot black chain look fence around it, and it could have possibly prevented something, but just throwing it out there, just...
Thank you. Dr. Hofstein?
I would agree, I, I would put safety first, particularly since these basins are dispersed right between the next two buildings that are going to have many young children, it's, nothing is isolated, every, every five or six houses, or whatever it is, it appears that these basins are there, and I would certainly like some kind of fencing around it.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Yeah. Mr. Sutch, since you seem to have experience, would, would...
Mr. Sutch.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I was, I was just saying, since you seem to have experience with these things.
Yeah.
Would, in, in your experience, would a six-foot fence solve that, that problem? I mean, I guess it would help for the kids not to get in, but you still have, you know...
So, I mean, the reality is, right, I mean, for me as a kid, a 12-foot fence wouldn't hurt me. I, I mean, I mean, I was that kid, that the higher the fence, the more of the challenge that I got to climb it. But is it somewhat of a deterrent? Sure. I mean, especially for, you know, listen, we're talking about i- if you have a five, six-year-old or someone, you know, a little guy, but I mean, that may deter, I mean, a fence. And, and, you know, aesthetically, there are, what you were saying, you could put a nice-looking black kind of chain look fence that looks nice, that it kind of just, yeah, let's, it at least protects the community for, you know, if something does happen, I feel at least there was some due diligence that the community took some, you know, responsibility. I mean, can, I mean, listen, in life, you can't, you can't stop, you know, anything can happen, but I mean, a little deterrent, eh? What's it, like Dr. Hofstein said, I mean, safety first. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Chair?
Yeah.
Could you verify what you're asking from the board? Are you asking for, you know, our opinion on the larger basins, the smaller basins on all of them?
No, on, on...
There's a very big discrepancy and a difference between the size of the basin and the danger that it could, you know, propose based off of the size of them.
Correct, I mean, and you can see by looking at the exhibit, the purple basins are, you know, much, much larger than the, than, than the small green ones. So we believe that it's in, in the interest of public safety to provide the fencing around those larger basins. But as a smaller ones, again, that the ordinance doesn't give us a, you know, clear direction whether fencing is required or not. And again, I just think it's a matter of, of personal opinion and very subjective, whether people feel the fence is a, is a hindrance or whether it's a, a protective measure.
So your question is only by these smaller ones, obviously the big ones, you're going to be...
The question is related to the smaller basins.
Okay, so what is the size of those basins?
They have footprints of about 2, 3,000 square feet, so let's call them, you know, 50 by 50 feet, 50 by 60 feet, something like that.
That's still a nice size.
Even the little ones?
Yeah.
Yes. They have footprints of 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, something like, like that.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely is deceiving. Because they look a lot smaller now, right?
Oh, your microphone?
I was just talking myself.
Mr. McFarland, when you do your calculations, you usually take, what, 100-year floods for the stormwater and so forth? So worst-case scenario, I know you said that some of these basins are 18 and no more than 24 inches, but if we have one of these massive rain events that it seems that the whole country has been having, what depth of water are we looking at in some of these?
That's the two-foot we're talking about during a 100-year storm.
Okay.
Because these are small basins that have outlets a few inches above the bottom.
Okay.
So on smaller storms, the water will flow in, it will exfiltrate, and then if it, if the storm is, is more intense, the basins will, will fill up, and then the water will be let out through the, you know, through the outlet structure.
And of course, these outlets will have grading on them to prevent...
Correct, correct. And the water is only at that depth for a short duration.
Okay, so, you know, the way I look at this is that with such low depth in these, I think a six-foot fence is kind of a overkill, and what we're trying to prevent is, you know, the little toddler from going in there, and I think a, a four-foot fence, a black, almost disappears, would be adequate for, for something like this.
Yeah.
I don't know how everybody else...
No, I agree.
Yeah.
And I, I'm sorry, and I do agree with Mr. Hyman, I thought they were much smaller, hence my conversation back to the other application about the bushes, so that I did think they were much smaller, so I, I retract that comment. I think they're much too large to have just bushes, I agree with Mr. Hudeback, I don't know that six feet is necessary for something like that. I would agree that something four-foot would be acceptable.
So just to, you know, follow up on that, I agree with that, I think a fence is necessary due to the size of them, I also didn't realize the, the size of, you know, that's about 50 feet long, it's, in my opinion, would be necessary, the only question is for the aesthetics purposes, would you be willing to put in bushes around that to actually make it look a little bit nicer?
Yeah, we don't, we don't object to that, either, either putting some landscaping on the outside or inside the fencing.
Thank you.
Subject, subject to having room to, to make that landscaping work. So seems to me like most board members favor a four-foot-high, black chain link fence. I think that's what I heard, if that's the consensus.
Well, I think we'll vote on it, right, officially, or...
Well, so I think that it would be, if there is at some point a motion to approve, if that would be one of the conditions.
Okay, I would like to just piggyback on something, so, so the bushes around it, I think that's, that's a great idea, because, you know, with kids, out of sight, out of mind, they don't see it, maybe they're not so enticed to go there and try to skate on it or something. That sounds like a great idea.
We don't object to any landscaping around, around the fencing. So if we're done, if we're done with that issue, we can move on to...
We're in full agreement with the board's request?
Yes. So if we're done with that issue, we can talk about a couple of the technical items that, that Mr. Peters identified in his review of the subdivision plan. Anthony, if you can go back to, I think it's a, go back to A4 for me, please? Oh, A4 is already there. So A4 is the overall development plan that shows a layout of the, of the, of the, of the project. There are a couple of lots that Mr. Peters in his review properly identified. Anthony, if you can zoom in for me in this, this area first, I think that's the right spot. You can get it right where I have the, can you see the pointer from where you're sitting? Right in there. Yeah, right in that, right in this area. Yeah, perfect. So we have a series of lots here, 323, 22, 21, on this radius. As shown on the submitted plans, they currently do not meet lot frontage or lot width requirement, but we did take a look at that today, and we can adjust these, this string of lot lines here for these 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, there's about eight lots or so. We can basically kick this lot line to the right, kick this line to the right, kick that line to the right, work that string out, all those lots would conform when we make that change, so we're not asking for any relief on those particular lots, so we'll make that change, so, so that these lots meet the 80-foot lot frontage and 100-foot lot width measured at the building setback line. The next one that, that Mr. Peters...
Graham, can I just pin that down for the board and for our future and hopefully for the approving resolution? Speaking of lot 2, 2, 3.23, 3.22, 3.21, is there any, did I get all of them?
I heard there were seven.
Well, 321, 322, and 323 were the ones which were shown, I'm just, I'm going to say, non-compliant on our submitted plans, but we can revise a string of lots, those three lots and some, some of the adjacent lots, we can revise a lot lines in that area so that they will all conform to the lot area, I'm sorry, to lot width and lot frontage requirements. So there's no relief required, they will comply with ordinance requirements. The next one is Lot 1.21, which Anthony, if you can go kind of down that way for me, if that makes any sense to you? Try to guide you, try to guide you there. Lot 21 is right down, right down there, so I need this up just a, just a, just a hair. Lot 21 is, is right in here. We also took a look at that, and that lot does not conform, but again, we, we can make a lot line adjustment there so that that lot will also comply to lot, to frontage and lot width, so there will not be any relief required for that particular lot.
I'm sure that's Lot 121.
That's Lot 1.21, so that lot will conform. Then the next one that Mr. Peters questioned is, Anthony, it's kind of up here, so if you can pull down, and I want to get, I want to get right over here in that corner, and if you could go up just a hair, it'd be perfect. So we have Lot 8.28, which is right here, which is a, kind of a unique lot, because it has frontage on a, a new proposed road, Mahogany Lane, it also has frontage on the cul-de-sac of, of Whitlock. Mr. Peters questioned whether the lot, I think he questioned, and Ernie, correct me if I'm wrong, but he questioned whether the lot met the lot frontage along the, along the cul-de-sac, but the, but it does meet the lot frontage and the lot width measured along Mahogany Lane. So our opinion is that the lot does conform, because I don't think it needs to technically meet the lot frontage along two streets, when those two streets are, frankly, they're, they're connected, they just seem to have, they just have two different names, but it's really one continual right-of-way. So our opinion is that lot conforms the way that is currently drawn, unless somebody disagrees with me, that would be our, our representation. disagrees with me. That would be our, our representation. And then the, the last lot in question, Anthony, if you can go down for me. I want to get down, down there. So go up, yeah, here. Good. Keep going. And then go over, I want this piece on the side over here. And then bring it up, please. That's good. The last one to talk about is lot one point zero-eight, which is the existing pond, and lot one point zero-nine, which is one of the proposed lots on a new cul-de-sac, which is identified as Beaster, Beisther Road, and who made that name. But what we have proposed here is we have a twenty-foot flag created that will provide access to the pond. Again, the pond will be owned, maintained by the, by the HOA. So when we introduce that twenty-foot flag out to the cul-de-sac, that created a, I believe it's just a lot frontage variance here for this lot one point zero-nine. I do want to confirm if it's lot width also, but I think it's just frontage. We believe that it's beneficial to have that, have that flag lot created and have that strip dedicated as part of lot one oh eight. The alternative would be, we could simply, we could provide this as an easement and not have to have that dimensional relief for lot one point oh nine. But I think frankly, it's just that it's only a, a de minimis dimensional relief requirement. Of course, no impact to the number of lot, no impact to the development of, of lot one point zero-nine. Again, our testimony is that the alternative of providing the flag lot, which is part of lot one point oh eight, not encumbering lot one point oh nine with an easement is, is a beneficial plan. It just makes for a better planning alternative, and I don't think it creates any negative impact to the zone plan or the master plan and would be entitled to the, to the D3 relief under, under those conditions. So that's the only relief that we're asking for in regards to any of the proposed lots. All of the other items that Mr. Peters identified, we, we can revise a plan to comply with all ordinance requirements.
So in regard to this particular issue and the access to the pond number three, you're requesting a variance for the frontage of lot one point oh nine. Is that correct?
Correct.
And with regard to that request, are you consider, as, as a planner and as an engineer, are you considering that this, the benefits of permitting this variance and that access way to the water, to the stormwater facility will outweigh any detriments to the design? And in that, perhaps you could describe, if there are any detriments, what they would be? And of course, you've already described the benefits.
Yes, I think the benefit of having that, that flag be part of lot one point oh eight with, with access to that lot being totally unencumbered, and again, not encumbering lot one point zero-nine with a, with an easement. You know, we, I think we've all had experience with easements, and sometimes they're not fully, fully respected. They lend some difficulty to the financing on those particular lots as well, so I think it's just a better plan. Again, that has no negative impact of providing that little flag lot. That allows for unimpeded access to, to pond number three and will allow full development of lot, lot one point oh nine in accordance with ordinance requirements for, for every other item other than the, other than the lot frontage.
And the access would be maintained by the homeowners association?
Correct.
And do you think this would have any adverse impact on the health, welfare, or safety of the community?
Uh, it would not.
So Graham, are there any other points at this level that you want to bring to the board's attention?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that covered what we wanted to talk about initially. I know there were some, some comments in both reports about, about traffic, and Mr. Ray's gonna provide some, some discussion on, on those items. We have reviewed both professionals' reports, and there are a series of technical comments that we will agree to comply with.
Before you do that, can I just confirm for the boards and my understanding that of lots that you've identified in this discussion, you are only requesting the variance for lot one point, one point oh nine, and that's a variance for lot frontage?
Correct.
The other variances that have been pointed, identified by the engineers and planners for the board, you've addressed them by redesigning the plan to eliminate them. Is that correct?
Correct.
So you want to continue?
Well, I think that's all I have on my direct right now, subject to, of course, questions and, and some discussion by the board.
All of the remaining, the plan remains the same as was presented at, at the last meeting?
Yes, other than the items that, that I discussed earlier, yes.
Are, are all these homes gonna be available on the open market for sale to every, to anyone?
In, in terms of, at the time of sale? What, I don't understand. You mean on the open market?
The question is, can anyone buy any of these homes, or is this going to be a closed development, only available to certain people to purchase?
I, I don't know that. We're representing the developer and, of the land, and that would be subject to whatever the home builder would do.
Can we ask that question?
I don't know the answer.
I said, is the developer here, can we ask that question to the developer?
Yes, the plan would make the project available to any buyer.
And, and these are gonna be on the MLS listings as per all?
Well, I don't know. Most of the larger home builders don't use the multiple listing system. They have their own methods of advertisement. So I don't think that the, it, I can only say that it only makes sense for some development of this size to market the products properly. And I would think if they didn't, they'd be proceeding at their own risk. But I don't think that's something we can commit to or not. I don't know they would use MLS or through their own sales devices or their own sales department. I mean, if you, any of the major home builders, they have their own sales departments that are in their direction.
You, you're tap dancing, kind of answered my question. But let me ask Mr. McFarland another question. We were, you were testifying on another application, and I was questioning the size of the garages and whether a car could fit in the garages. And you made the statement that you build what your clients are requesting. And I noticed in certain areas in Jackson, there's new developments that are going in, and you, you couldn't fit a car in the garage, that, that, the home that was built. And that, of course, affects the parking calculations. So is this going to meet the standards for a regular car to park inside the garage and count that as a parking spot, or?
Well, the way that I can answer the question is, is that probably, an answer you're probably not gonna like. It's probably the same answer I gave you last time, is that any plan that this developer, the, or the builder of the individual homes submits, goes through a building permit process, as they submit architectural plans, we draw a plot plan. That plot plan shows whether it's a one-car garage or a two-car garage or a no-garage proposed, and it shows the, the driveway, the off-street parking spaces required. Those number of parking spaces has to comply with RSI's requirements, and the township has, has authored its own interpretation a couple of years back on how to extend the parking requirements because the RSI is, only gives us up to, you know, five bedrooms. So if somebody has a six, seven, or eight-bedroom home, the township issued a, a memo a couple of years ago that indicated how, how many parking spaces are required for homes with, you know, six, seven, or eight bedrooms, whatever the case may be. And every single home is bound to comply with those requirements. So that doesn't mean that there is going to be a one-car or a two-car or a three-car or a no-car garage. That is subject to what the actual builder wants to build. But under any circumstance, they're bound to provide the off-street parking that's required in accordance with those requirements.
So because in, in looking at the plans, and, and I'll look at lot number three point four-four, it's considerably larger than the rest of the homes, and it's on much more property. So obviously, there's gonna be more bedrooms in that home and requiring more parking. So are you, is your testimony that you are going to follow all the RSI requirements and provide and, and match those rules?
Absolutely. The, the app, or the, the builder at the time is, is, is bound to. There's no, there's no exception that can be granted from that particular requirement of off-street parking on an individual lot. That's, that's black, that's black and white. It goes through, goes through the township, gets looked at, gets looked at by zone and gets looked at by the township engineer as part of the building permit application.
Because, you know, one of the developments that I'm speaking of is over on Whitesville Road. You look to your right and you see these homes that are under construction now, and you, you couldn't put a smart car in, in these garages, the way that these things were built. So our professionals, do you guys have anything to weigh in on, on this?
As it relates to the single-family detached housing, the developer acts at his own peril based upon the residential site improvement standards and the density of the housing that's being proposed determines how wide the road has to be, whether or not on-street parking is permitted. And then they have to provide required off-street parking in a driveway and/or garage combination. That's it. This application doesn't ask for a waiver of that information. Board's not granting it, runs with the land. Whoever decides to build it has to follow it. As it relates to the multifamily or affordable housing portion of it, they provided plans and testimony. And I apologize if, if the board hasn't heard this testimony because this set of plans, I'm gonna sound like I'm testifying for Mr. McFarland in a minute. This set of plans doesn't propose any changes to the previously approved affordable housing section of the site. That being said, they've provided off-street parking for the affordable housing portion of the project in accordance with RSI's. They have the, and they don't rely on parking in the building. They rely strictly on, on-street parking. Is that correct, Mr. McFarland?
Well, we, we provide the, you know, let's call it those four, you know, satellite parking areas to serve the, the, the affordable housing units, correct. Not relying on on-street parking.
So at the end of the day, this isn't the first time this project's been through the wringer, so to speak. They just, they keep losing lots because of wetlands or this issue or that issue. But consistently, I can say that this plan has met the off-street parking requirements.
Okay. And lastly.
If I may on that, the last point, the reason that wasn't brought up is because our application is not seeking an amendment to that, and it was part of the prior approval.
Understood. And lastly, I don't see any recreation area at all, other than a trail. And I think if, you know, I, I'm, what I'm feeling here is that you guys are creating a closed development here. You have your own house of worship, you have your own, you know, and I, I see no recreation other than the walkway.
Well, the, the, the ordinance doesn't require us to, to provide any, and this is an application that complies with all requirements, you know, save for the one variance at lot one point zero-nine. So I, I would just stipulate that the plan's in compliance with ordinance requirements.
I understand they comply with the ordinance, but being a responsible builder and giving the community what they need, don't you think that that would be a, a good addition to this project?
I think that's, that's for the, the applicant and, and developer to decide if that's an element that they want to include in their application. And on this particular project, they, they don't include any, any separate recreation space other than, you know, the walkway.
You know, I, I get the feeling it, it's like profits over anything and, you know, every square inch developed without providing anything else. That's my opinion. I'm done.
A couple of questions. In a community this size, and you're going to have a, I assume the builder is going to have some kind of management office or needed a management office. Is that being provided on-site? If people have a problem and you need management?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're, what you're referring to. I mean, this is a project for single-family homes. There would be a, a separate management company for the affordable housing units, but I don't envision there being a management company for any other components of the, of the application. The roads are being dedicated to the municipality, so they're, they're public streets. And it's, it's simply individual lots being created in the format of a conventional, single-family home subdivision. So I, I don't think there's any plans to create any sort of, you know, separate management company.
Let me give you an example. Mr. Sush has a community that has three hundred and thirty-two, and they have a management office. Wesley, where I live, has over fourteen hundred homes. We have a management office. Both have HOAs, but you would need somebody who manages the day-to-day problems that can occur in, in a community like this. So.
All I can say is that right, right now, there's no plans to have any sort of management company involved in the, in the project, is my understanding. Again, it's a, it's a conventional, uh, single-family lot subdivision that doesn't rely on or require any need for something like that, since the, kind of roads are being dedicated to the municipality. The HOA, of course, is being created for the, the management of the stormwater management basins. So I, I, I'm not sure what else you're, you're looking for. I think the other projects you're, you're talking about may have private roads and other facilities that they own and maintain, which is not the same as this particular, this particular project.
So what you're saying is the HOA, when they, they have a meeting maybe in, in the local diner. Just another question. You're going to have separate builders, I assume. The affordable housing will have the affordable housing people. I assume the synagogue will have separate builder. And who is, who is the builder going to build the homes?
I don't know that that's been identified. This is an application for the subdivision approval. Could, it could go a hun, it could go a hundred different directions as to, as to who build the homes, as to, you know, lots could be sold off individually. The project is being phased. Phases could be sold individually. There's a, there's a hundred options of how it could be developed in the future.
And at what phase is the affordable housing going to be constructed?
Well, the affordable housing guidelines are very clear that there is an obligation to provide them in a, you know, in a takedown schedule consistent with, that, that's tied to the, the number of, of market rate units that are being constructed, and it has to comply with, with those requirements.
The statutes do require a sequential phasing that is in, consistent with a percentage of the affordables being built with the market rate. That would result in all of the affordables being built by the ninety percent of the market rate, and that would leave, they would only be, they would be complete by the ninety percent of the, of the single-family homes. Non-market rate would be, only the restricted nine, I'm sorry. Under this proposal, any proposal here, the affordable housing has a ratio that complies with the market rate, and there is a cap that at ninety percent of market rate, a hundred percent of affordable has to be built. And throughout the development, there is a schedule that is in that established as to the percentage of affordables relative to the market rates. So we will, and our client will be in full compliance with that schedule.
Mr. Jokel, could I just ask a question about that? Because I'm, I'm, and I apologize for my ignorance on this topic, because as you know, the affordable housing is not part of this current application. Is the affordable housing being presented as single-family homes?
Affordable housing is in the.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to confirm that.
So it's likely they're gonna be built much sooner.
Yeah, but.
I just can't commit to that at this point, however.
Right, because it, it doesn't make sense. I mean, you're not gonna build half of an apartment house.
I, well, I was trying to point out that we will be in compliance with the regulation. I would suggest, and I can't bind anybody by this, that isn't a very smart economic decision. It's wiser to build them all at one. It's wiser to build them all at one time, which is most likely.
Okay.
But I cannot, nor does the applicant commit to that. But we will be in full compliance with the requirements.
Just because I, Mr. McFarland, I understand is correct. There are a million different ways this could be done, and it could involve selling off different portions. And I'm seeing in my head, in that description, an unfinished affordable housing apartment building that does not appeal.
Correct, but there are certainly protection to guard against that. And actually, there is a schedule on our overall development plan that does show when the affordable housing units are required to be constructed as related to the number of market rate units.
And I'm sorry, which plan is that on?
That's on our overall development plan. Anthony, if you can, if you can pull it up, if you can scan down for me. It's on the very bottom, very bottom of this plan sheet, Anthony. So we do have that schedule on the plan. Nope. Back up to the previous plan, please. I think it's A4, I believe. Not that one. So back up to A4, please. It's right, oh, he went too fast. He's too fast for me. It's right there. So that is, that is the affordable housing schedule that dictates by which number of market rate units, X number of affordable units need to be constructed. That's a state regulation.
Graham, everybody seems to be, like me, not able to see it clearly. Perhaps you could just go through it and...
Well, you can see it up on the screen now, and it tabulates that for, you know, when we have 95 market rate units, 50% of the affordables have to be completed, you know, 24 units into, so. Anyway, that schedule is in accordance with the state requirement, has to be adhered to. There's no deviating from that schedule.
Thank you. I'm sorry, somehow I missed that.
Mr. McFarland, can you just clarify on the left side of the plan, East Veterans Highway? You guys are preserving the building near the project entrance, correct? And what's that used for?
I'm not sure what you're asking me about, Mark. I mean, we have, we have the, we have the community center, right, the shul up there, I believe.
I think that's at the top of the paper on Hope Chapel. Yeah, at Jade and East Veterans.
There's a recreation component here? Okay, so my client advises me, I frankly just don't see it called out on the plan, that that's actually a recreation, that is a recreation component. That is a recreation component.
It's shown on the demolition plan as existing recreational building to remain. If you could just clarify what that space would all be used for?
At the time of the prior approval, that was proposed, and as far as I know, it was not modified since then.
Correct. Our plan shows that this building to remain to be used for recreational purposes, so the... For the project, there is.
Is there also an open space immediately to the northeast, I guess?
Yes, there is. There are actually three ponds on-site which can be used for recreation purposes as well.
Would you take a second, review the plan, and then describe it to the board, please?
Well, yes. Looking at the recreation area, that calls out a community center of, you know, the building to remain about 3,300 square feet. It calls for a shuffleboard and a playground area to be removed, but then it calls for a recreation area with some open playfield and some play equipment for children. And then to the right is, you know, the pedestrian, a bike trail goes through the, goes through good part of the development. And then we have an existing pond, which also provides for recreation opportunities for the residents.
If I recall, that was where there was an old campground.
Graham, could you show it on the plan?
Yeah, those components, those components are along East Veterans Highway up here at the front of the site, and, you know, that main pond is over here in this area. So there's a recreation component here, and then a pond is here.
And this is unchanged from the original or previous approval, correct?
Correct. Thanks for pointing that out, Mark.
Now, are these the two homes that are on the lot already that are going to remain? Weren't there two homes on the original plan that were gonna remain? Two existing homes?
Yeah, there is one home that runs on Whitesville Road, and there is one home internal to the development.
All right, so look, that's not what the, that recreation...
Correct. They're not in that portion. We were just...
They're two separate, okay. Thank you.
I like thinking back to the HOA. Since you don't have one builder, there's a possibility that you can, each phase can have a separate builder. If each phase has a separate builder, each phase may have its own HOA. How do you reconcile who's going to take care of the common grounds, et cetera, if there are multiple HOAs?
Whether it's one or 10 builders, they're obligated to comply with the plan and the restrictions that are imposed to the plan.
So you're gonna have meetings of multiple HOAs getting together and arguing who's going to take care of what?
Well, so are you saying, I'm sorry, Dr. Hoss, I'm gonna piggyback off, that's a great question. So I didn't know how to ask the question when you said it about builders before. So you're saying there will be more than one HOA?
No. I was trying to answer the question that if there were more than one builder, they still have to get, have to build to the plans and get the permits in the same process as any of them.
No, no, I understand, but my question specifically is piggybacking off to Dr. Hoss, and that's a great question. If you have multiple builders, will each builder's section, so to speak, have their own HOA? Graham is shaking his head, no.
Well, I'll give you an example if you're looking for. Westlake had two builders. One was Leneer, whatever it was called at that time, and the other was Toll Brothers. And each section had its own HOA, and it took a number of years until both got together and decided to make it one. But at that point, we had two HOAs, two management companies, et cetera. So it's a possibility.
Well, that's not what this application is seeking. It's proposing one homeowner's association for the entire project.
Again, I don't know the design of the Westlake in detail, but this project by its nature, the stormwater management basins are all interconnected, all flow kind of in the same direction, they're all interconnected. So it only makes sense to have one HOA that would maintain all of those. I personally don't see a circumstance that more than one HOA would be created or would have any benefit to being created for a project like this.
So that's something that could be stipulated in the resolution, then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would definitely do that. Westlake, the water holes are all the basins. That's where those end, so...
But again, depending upon the particulars of that project, how it was phased, the phases could be more separate than, you know, the phasing is proposed on a plan like this, and a totally different animal.
Well, I think something should be put in the resolution.
We will stipulate to one HOA.
Yes.
Any other questions, Mr. McFarland? Mr. Romar, you have anything else?
If Mr. McFarland agreed to address all the comments in my letter, I'm satisfied. There's comments on adding some driveways to certain houses that weren't shown, and signage on the streets, that kind of stuff.
Yes, we'll agree to work out all those details, address all your comments.
And then where the dead ends meet, did we describe, we didn't, we never described the access?
I don't think we had any discussion from the board yet about that particular location.
In similar situations, would you, have you seen, say, emergency access chain link or bollards or something like that?
Yes, it could be bollards, it could be flexible delineators to allow emergency vehicles to go through, but to, you know, deter the regular traveling public from going through.
And what was, what's the reason for not connecting the streets?
Well, it's not, it's not needed to comply with RSIS. The Whitlock Avenue is really not, not part of the, part of the development. There are a couple of single-family homes on there that are gonna, you know, maintain their rural character with a, with a new cul-de-sac. So, again, Whitlock Avenue was not part of the application, would be considered an off-street improvement.
I do like the idea of emergency access in case of an emergency.
I think we need some input from the board.
I'm sorry, what did Mr. McFarland say?
I think we need some discussion from the board on how they feel about that cul-de-sac on Whitlock Avenue and Mahogany Lane should be treated.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Maybe we should question the traffic engineer about the access.
And Denton Lane as well, both, the two. Similarly, Denton is...
Oh, yeah, if you, if you feel that something should be provided at Denton Lane, we'd provide something.
I'm sorry, say it again, I missed the last part of that.
It's gonna be me or Mark.
I'm sorry, you, Mr. McFarland, I missed the last part of your comment.
I think, I think Mark was alluding to possibly providing some sort of, I'm gonna say it, soft barrier between the cul-de-sac and between Denton Lane. Again, flexible delineators or something like that. But again, it would be, we would need some input from the board.
And there are two locations...
But you would, at the time of final plan review, you can accept that, any reasonable recommendation?
Yes, of course, but I would rather have a little bit of input from the board, because again, it's, it's one of those kind of subjective requirements that there's no specific standard for it. So make sure we're all on the same page and give it its due consideration. I just think tonight's the right spot to have a little discussion about it.
So, Mr. Romar, my concern was when Mr. McFarland was speaking earlier about not doing the improvements to Denton Lane and then leaving, then the cul-de-sac at Whitlock, my concern was emergency vehicles. You're talking well over 200 units. So my concern was emergency vehicles as well. So this soft barrier, would that allow, would that be, that would allow better access? I hope I just said that right.
Well, it would allow emergency vehicle access, but hopefully deter the general public from traversing through those points, which are not designed for, you know, for primary or for permanent access.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peters.
Well, I appreciate the back and forth with the site engineer. Before the board members make a decision on what they're looking for, I'd recommend that you hear from the applicant's traffic engineer. Then we put those two together and come up with ideas. I think both Mark and I have some ideas about what you can do to increase site safety. Let's hear what they're proposing first before we sort of decide without hearing Mr. Ray's testimony.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, we do present, intend to present John Ray, our traffic consultant. He will certainly address that issue.
Mr. Martin? Yeah. So that was a great segue there. So I'd like to come back to the variance, right? I think, I appreciate you summarizing. So one lot, the only variance that you're asking for, 1.09, and you said the frontage. So forgive my, what about the frontage doesn't comply?
Well, the lot frontage requirement is 80 feet. And, give me a minute, I'll find the number. Yeah, the lot frontage is 80 feet. We right now have it proposed at 62.0, I think it's 62.06 feet. And we have that 20-foot-wide flag lot. So if you added the 20-foot flag lot, it would be 82 feet. It would conform, but it would be an easement to provide access to the pond. And our opinion is that it's, you know, no detriment to provide a one lot that has a lot frontage of 62 feet. It doesn't affect the developability of the lot. The lot still meets a lot with requirement, which is measured at the building setback line. So it doesn't have any negative impact upon development of the lot or upon the project, and of course, in my opinion.
Okay. So this is a question for our experts. The rule does say 80. So why 80? And what about the 60? If there is really no detriment, why isn't the rule say 60? Must be a reason.
The 80 is more designated for a typical, single-family home. But in this case, they just want to provide enough access to the pond property for maintenance. So in this situation, it seems to be appropriate to just divide it up this way, because now's the chance to divide it up and provide that access rather than have an easement.
Okay. So it's your opinion that, as was stated, that there's no detriment to it? It's just, yeah, please.
Yeah, there really is no detriment. And just to piggyback off, I don't know if you caught what the applicant professionals had said earlier. A lot of times for financial reasons and for mortgages and things like that, it kind of just reflects a little bit better if there's not an easement. It's kind of like one solid property.
Okay.
It's really preference, but it...
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I did hear it. No disrespect or anything, but I'd rather hear it from our own experts. Yeah, there you go. All right, thank you. That's a lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hyman. Thank you. Just a couple of comments regarding the lot that he was just referring to with that road that leads to the wetlands. Are you gonna propose a fence to restrict access? Now, I'm not talking about around the entire wetlands, I'm talking about exactly where that proposed road would be.
Right, let me answer. No, we don't have a fence proposed there right now. But again, if the board felt it was necessary, we'd be guided by the opinion of the board. And I don't think ordinance requires a fence there. I don't, I don't think there's any reason to put one.
No, it may not, but it's just for safety purposes, if you don't want people...
My opinion, I don't think we need a fence there, but...
Correct, but if you want to prevent...
Location of fences is very, is very subjective.
If you want people not to go there, then it would be appropriate to just put a single gate at the front of that lot or a little bit further back so that no one has access to there.
Client said they don't want to put a fence up. Okay. But you vote.
I'm sorry, yes fence, no fence? What did you say?
My client prefers no fence. But the board are the ones who vote.
The next thing is, you asked for an opinion about Whitlock Avenue as far as the concern with emergency access. I would note that the proposal that we have in front of us today is different than the original approval. The design of the streets are very different. The change from Denton Lane originally was going from Whitesville Road almost, you know, straight to East Veterans. Now we have many 90-degree turns. I think that in general, the makeup of this development is very different than it was originally, although the general proposal is more or less the same, but the design of it is very different. As far as access from Whitlock, I mean, there's pretty close access, in my opinion, from East Veterans. I don't see why it would be necessary. My concern is the Denton Lane. You mentioned something about that this is not in the plan. The original approved plan was that you were developing Denton Lane, and it would be, in my opinion, that it's important for you to develop Denton Lane so that there is emergency access from Whitesville. It would give the entire development more general access for the general public who live there, as well as emergency vehicles. Now, the concern, I believe, on the original proposal was that vehicles should not travel as a shortcut from Whitesville to East Veterans. I think that was, that concern was eliminated by redesigning this development and putting in all these 90s. If you'd go down Denton Lane, and then you hit Swan, in order to get out of there, you would have to go to Jade and all around. I don't think that the public would be cutting through there at all. I think it would be a benefit to the general neighborhood and for emergency access, a lot more important than it would be on Whitlock. That's my personal opinion, and I would very strongly recommend developing Denton Lane for that purpose.
I agree.
Just keep in mind that it, that it's considered an off-site improvement. Denton Lane is not part of the application.
That was part of the original approval.
But this, Denton Lane, just to state for the record, Denton Lane, those fronting properties are not part of this application. Any improvement of Denton Lane would be considered an off-site improvement, in my, in my opinion.
But I think what Mr. Hyman tried to say, we understand that it's off-site, however part of your... part of your original plan, part of the original approval, it wasn't included. And just before you answer, I do agree with your suggestion. The only reason I mentioned Whitlock was because they do serve two different areas in the project. So that was my only concern. When you talk about that many houses, I'm thinking from a safety perspective, just in the case of emergency, God forbid, more emergency vehicles could get in. And that was just my perspective. I do agree with what you're saying, though.
Correct, so to address that, I think you were spot on with the, if they would put some kind of emergency access at the end of that so they could connect for emergencies, it would be very beneficial. How to regulate that private vehicles don't go through there is a whole nother.
Issue.
Issue, how to deal with it once you do that. But I think that the bigger concern is the Denton Lane access. I just feel that there's no access from Whitesville for emergencies.
Mr. McFarland, can I ask you why you decided to remove that? I mean, obviously, listen, we're all smart here, financial reasons, I'm sure is part of it, but why did that change in the original approval?
Unfortunately, I don't have a great answer for that particular question. I know that, I do know that there are other applications pending along Denton Lane. And I believe the original thought was that those other applications and this application would somehow come together at the same time so it wouldn't, would not become this contentious issue to have the Denton Lane improvement, you know, as an obligation of this particular application. Those other applications would be required to fully improve Denton Lane. And, you know, in the real estate world, as deals are made and properties come together, a lot of things change over time. And I think the original plan was, was to somehow, you know, get them all working together. And for whatever reason, that kind of, I believe, fell apart in, you know, in some fashion. But again, as we dive into the merits of this application, I think, first of all, I think we need some testimony from Mr. Ray, who's going to really drive home what any potential differences are between the approved plan and this plan without the Denton Lane improvement. But again, it's in the world of real estate and land development that is an ever-evolving picture of where every property stands relative to its regulatory approvals and outside agency approvals and trying to get all these things, these things buttoned up.
I just want to clarify something, though. You have not abandoned the prior approval. You're seeking an amended approval, correct?
Correct.
So if that's the case, and this is not totally off-site, then? This is on the original approval, on the approval, then Denton Lane should still be there. This is not a separate application.
That's correct, but it's amended, and that's part of our amendment. And that amendment is based on.
So that's part of your request?
Other development.
That's your, part of your request for an amendment?
However, may I interrupt the board and ask, would you permit Mr. Johnson to be sworn and give testimony on this issue?
Hold on one second. Any additional questions for Mr. McFarland before we have another witness?
Well, are we done with Mr. McFarland? Because we have to open it to the public, then. I mean, is Mr. Johnson dropping in or is he, is Mr. McFarland done?
I'm not going anywhere.
He's just going to step in to address this issue.
All right, so then.
So for the limited purpose of discussing the Denton Lane, I'd like to have Mr. Johnson address the board.
And I think that we all welcome that. I just want to make sure that Mr. McFarland will come back up so we can open it to the public.
And then I'd ask, we'll interrupt for a moment Graham's testimony and return to him when Mr. Johnson is, when you're finished.
Sounds like an excellent plan.
In that case, I would like to call as a temporary interreening witness, Mr. Johnson.
This is Randy Johnson.
You swear that the testimony you'll give to this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name, I know that Mr. Junko had in your involvement in this project.
My official name is James R. Johnson, Jr., known as Randy. For the edification of the board, a lot of confusing questions that shouldn't be confusing, so I'd like to try and straighten out a whole myriad of questions that were asked by the board, if I may. This particular piece of property has been before the planning board and the zoning board for more than a decade. Many applications, many litigations, many iterations, and I'll try and clarify as much as I can why some of the things are designed as they are. So the cul-de-sac that's proposed at Whitlock was because, years ago, this room would have been filled with objectors. And when, during those years, I think Mr. Peters was here for most of those applications along the way, the objectors or the board felt that the residents that live on Whitlock didn't deserve to have all these residents going down their private lane. So Whitlock was out. They didn't want an exit to go out Whitlock. And the same condition existed at Denton Lane. If you look at the lots on Denton Lane, there's about, I guess, five single-family residences if you pulled in off of Whitesville on the right-hand side. They also did not want this community exiting in front of their lots. So at one point in time, there was an approval that had a cul-de-sac there stopping because they didn't want an exit going out onto Whitlock. The reason that we changed it, the ask that we changed on this application is because Mr. Peters, at the last meeting, asked the engineer if in fact the, can I use your?
Other way.
Mr. Peters asked that since the original application is approved, this parcel has now got an approval which mandates improvements along Denton Lane on their frontage. And this parcel here did the same thing. So the improvements are required by this developer and this developer to improve Whitlock to this point. We're willing to connect from here to here once they do that. But Mr. Peters asked a question. If these two developers do not improve this road, would we be willing to build the whole road? And I said to the engineer, I'm not willing to do that because this whole road has to get torn up again by this developer and this developer's sewer that has to go through here. It would make zero sense for us to agree to pave this road if these guys don't show up and it's just going to get dug up again. And that's why we asked now for this temporary cul-de-sac.
Randy, clarify if you would.
So we're going to pave this now. We'll provide whatever barriers, temporary fire, truck access, whatever makes common sense on both accesses. But we want to stop here and not pave this until, we're going to be back before this board, probably planning board, for this parcel and for the next phase. And this parcel and for the next phase, it connects this entire pavement by three developers to pave this road out to Whitesville.
So is, my understanding is you don't want to develop it now because it will be ripped up by future developers which possibly have approvals? Is that my, is that correct?
Not possible. They do have approvals and an obligation to improve it.
Okay, is there, so the reason why you don't want to do it is because you're waiting for them?
No, no, wait, no. Mr. Peters asked a question at the last meeting. If we go first and they're not here, would we pave that road out there? And to me, it's just a total waste of a quarter million dollars for no reason.
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, did you say that those two lots, 20701 and 20601, that, or those identified parcels? That there are existing approvals on those now which require the improvement of Denton Lane?
Correct.
And are those approvals by the planning board?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way to develop that currently with sewer access and you have it locked? That way it's accessible later and you get reimbursed for that? Is there some kind of a mechanism that can be done that currently they should have this developed for safety purposes?
And that would be not something for the board. That would be whether the township has an existing ordinance. I am not aware of that. I don't know if Mr. Peters or Gina is aware of any such. I haven't been here for six years. I don't know what's going on.
The municipal ordinance does not take into account proportionate share at this point, although in general, that would be the legal standard. If I build something and I upsize it 20% so that Mark can use it, when Mark comes in, he owes me 20%. There's nothing, to the best of my knowledge, available at the municipal ordinance level or, nor is there a requirement between the developers along Denton Lane and the applicant to do that.
And making that requirement would not be the purview of this board?
Madam Chair?
For me, just in light of what Mr. Johnson said, I agree with him even as far as with practicality purposes of what he was stating. So for me, on my side, I agree with why and understand why Denton Road's not being developed.
Yeah, I agree now that you explain the reasoning. However, at the end of your cul-de-sac there, what is the condition of Denton Road right now?
It currently is about a 12 to 15-foot wide cart, paved cartway from this point here to, all the way up through here to this residence. And it's been, it's been paved or laid in the last six, eight years or so. I don't know exactly.
So in your opinion, do you think that an emergency vehicle could navigate down that road?
Absolutely, sure.
So if we put up some type of barriers on your cul-de-sac to that, for instance, if you go to Elm School, in the back of Elm School, up on the hill, there's some barriers there that allow emergency vehicles to come in, but no traffic?
Yeah, my personal recommendation would be a chain that the fire truck can just knock down the chain because I think if you put something else there, you're just going to, traffic is getting so bad in town. We all know that, right? And.
It's because of Mr. Ray.
It's going to, no, it's part of life.
It's because of those D's.
We have to recognize it's part of life today. It's going to be what it's going to be. If that gets opened up, it'll be a thoroughfare. The people will be trying to go through there instead of using Whitesville.
Understood.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate Mr. Johnson's testimony. As I had suggested before, as the board starts to deliberate, let's please get Mr. Ray's testimony in so we have a full pot and when we start, we can come up with an answer. Because here's my suggestion, while I don't often disagree with Mr. Johnson, this project's been redesigned five or six times, so it wouldn't be a cut-through. My question to the board is, if it doesn't matter to Mr. Johnson, why wouldn't we allow this project to connect to Denton Lane if and when the developers of the Denton Lane parcels extend the road, get rid of the emergency access, and make it a real access so now that the residents of this project have a third point of access?
I'm sorry, I thought that's what Mr. Johnson had offered to do.
I agree.
Okay, I apologize.
I agree, that's the way it should happen. No.
Because you're not building it.
I took offense, Ernie, that when you asked, if those two guys don't go, would we build a road? And I take offense because it's their obligation to build it. That's my only point.
My point is, from a traffic perspective, and I haven't heard from Mr. Ray yet, I think it just makes common sense, when someone builds the road up to your project, you should connect to it. Or you should leave your project in a form that when Denton Road gets extended, it can be connected to yours so that the residents of your community have easy access out to the street.
I agree, but I also said that this is a future section right here that will, by your comments, will make us connect that when that time comes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just one question for clarification. Yeah, thank you. So there's no way, so I understand that the builders right there are obligated to develop Denton, right? Is there any way where if that doesn't happen, then you become obligated to do it?
I think that's what Mr. Peters suggested, and that's what I'm objecting to.
Okay, so, so why? I mean, we all agree that it needs to be developed, whether it's A or B.
Two different things happen, right? Historically, if the other two projects that are now approved weren't approved, I would respect the residents that objected to say, I don't want that traffic coming by my house to honor that, if you will. Things have changed, and now that those two projects are going to come on board, it should be connected to Whitesville, in my opinion, just for safety reasons. But why should I have to do it if those two guys are obligated to do it?
Understood, understood. Okay, thank you.
I could remember all the way back to 2010, 2009, when this first came before the board. And at that time, the people who had the homes on Denton did come down and complain, exactly as Mr. Johnson said. They didn't want all that traffic coming past their house. Now that they're selling off the property and whatever they're doing with the money, it's okay, it won't mind them. But yes, and also letting more traffic from Whitlock going out onto East Veterans, it just adds a horror upon the horror over there and that area.
If I may, I'd like to address two other conversations that were going on earlier. One was about the homeowners association, and there only will be one. And the other topic is the ask for that variance on that particular lot is to provide access for recreation to that lake by the community. And unless you have any questions, that's all I wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, if that's the end of Mr. Johnson's testimony, we should open it up to the public if they have questions for Mr. Johnson. Open up to the public, anyone wishing to come and question Mr. Johnson about the testimony he just provided? Seeing no one come forward, we're going to go ahead and close this session.
Graham? Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Graham to return to the witness stand. So it seems like that issue is settled.
Well, to Mr. Peters' point, we're still waiting to hear from Mr. Ray, but certainly it's moved us forward.
Soon as, once Mr., once Graham has completed, will Mr. Ray prepare. And you have any other question, any other information to present to the board?
Nothing at this time. Any additional questions for Mr. McFarland from the board? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. I was like, who said that? Mr. Hyman?
And I just wanted to hear what, why there were the changes from the original approval to the current, you know, the current proposal. What are the needs and differences from the original to this? If you could just expand on it. Because if I could say, I think the only board member that's here since then was Mr. Hofstein, so if you could just.
Most, most of these changes are driven, were driven by the changes in the stormwater management rules to provide the green infrastructure compliance. And again, as I stated earlier, you'll see a series of what's called small-scale infiltration basins scattered throughout the, throughout the project. So most of the changes were driven by the limitation to have those every two and a half acres scattered throughout, throughout the property. Of course, that caused adjustments in lot lines and a little bit of layout here and there, and that's most of the reason why. why the changes have been presented.
And that wasn't because of wetlands?
Well, there are wetlands on the project, and I believe there was some alteration to the wetland lines as the project had gone through the regulatory process. So those were adjusted and taken into account in the revised layout.
Any additional questions, comments? I'm gonna go ahead and open it to the public. Anyone wishing to question Mr. McFarland or any comments on the testimony we've heard from him?
I could now ask to permit, I'd like to...
Let me just close public session on that.
Complete Mr...or Graham, and bring up John Ray.
Seeing no one come forward in regards to Mr. McFarland's testimony, I'm gonna...I'm gonna close public session, but I'm gonna ask that we take a 10-minute break. All right?
You're the chair, woman.
Then you can call Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
We're gonna call the meeting back to order. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to call John Ray, our traffic consultant.
Okay.
Mr. Ray, please come up to be sworn.
Do you swear that the testimony you'll give this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And Mr. Ray?
John Ray, R-E-A, professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates.
And this board is...
At least, at least one. So...
Thank you.
This board accepts your credentials.
So, John, you've been with this plan for a long time. There's some modifications today. Could you describe to the board how that might affect the traffic?
Sure. And actually, Dr. Hofstein was pretty correct. He said, "I just looked at my job number. It's 2009. So I've been involved with this for 16 years." What we're in for this evening is an amendment because of the issues that Mr. McFarland raised with respect to the stormwater regulations and the wetlands slight adjustments. With respect to traffic, the plan that we originally had approved had 205 single-family homes plus the affordables. We're down to 193, so the new plan has 12 fewer single-family homes than the one that was previously approved. Obviously, the big issue here is we've eliminated the full-time access to Denton Lane, and there's been a big discussion about that. And Mr. Hyman had the right idea. I was sitting here listening to everybody. If there's going to be an emergency access to either Whitlock or Denton, it makes more sense to go to Denton Lane because that gives you access to Whitesville Road, whereas Whitlock only comes out to East Veterans Highway. So that gives you access to three county roads for emergency purposes. With respect to the need for a full-time access to Denton Lane, I think everybody's pretty familiar with the road network in the area. If you think about where these roads go, where they connect to, based on my traffic study and my review of the layout of where the homes are and everything, I think very few of the residents would use the Whitesville Road access, even if we had it as a full-time access. And the reason is, Whitesville Road just really connects East Veterans Highway to South Hope Chapel. So why would you use Whitesville Road? If you were approaching the site from the east, you'd just use Veterans Highway. If you were approaching it from the west, you'd use East Veterans Highway. If you were approaching it from the south on South Hope Chapel, you'd probably just come up and use the South Hope Chapel access. Same thing if you were coming from the north on South Hope Chapel. If you just look at where Whitesville Road goes, all it does is connect to East Veterans and to South Hope Chapel. I'm not saying it wouldn't be a benefit to have that access. It would. I personally like to have as many points of access as possible to distribute the traffic as efficiently as possible. But at the end of the day, it's not as important as you may think for full-time, everyday access for the residents of the community. Having said that, I do endorse emergency vehicle access from the end of Denton to provide emergency vehicles a way to get into the site from Whitesville Road. And really, I guess that summarizes it.
Well, I have no other direct questions. And of course, your prior testimony remains in effect for the prior application.
Yes. We are inside three main county roads: East Veterans Highway, South Hope Chapel, and Whitesville. There are three signalized intersections at the three corners of the...
Could you...I'm very visual.
Yeah, yes. All right. Anthony, could you pull up the site location map, and then I'm gonna have to try to figure out how to use this. I'm gonna have more trouble than Randy. All right, well, you can see the site there. At the very top of the site map, that's the intersection, right there, that's the intersection of South Hope Chapel and Veterans Highway. That's one of the three signalized intersections that bracket the property. If you come back down, Anthony, could you go to the map that we just had up there? That was, that had a little bit more, showed a little bit more area? Let's see what we can find here. Ah, I think I have it. I just need, yeah, I just need the other site location map, if it's possible. Or actually, I could work with this. Right off at this corner right here, that would be the intersection, the signalized intersection at East Veterans and South Hope Chapel. And that was studied. That's under county jurisdiction. If we come back down, East Veterans to the west, it connects with Whitesville Road. And I don't know why this isn't working again, but Graham, I got to buy you a battery or so, I guess. But at any rate, East Veterans Highway connects with Whitesville Road. So if you, we're inside the middle of a triangle. And then over to the upper right-hand side of the map, maybe Graham can help me here. The upper right-hand side is the intersection of South Hope Chapel and Whitesville. There you go. So we are inside three main county roads. We have three signalized intersections that we analyzed for the county. They're all under county jurisdiction. Yeah, I did, yeah. I think I may not have been pointing it, and I don't want to blind anybody. Okay. So, yeah, so I hope, Mr. Hudak, that somewhat answered your question. We're in the middle of three main county roads, and we studied all of those intersections for the county. And as maybe some of the newer members of the board may or may not know, the county collects a traffic impact fee from every developer that gets a county planning board approval. The fees can be quite substantial, and they ultimately decide how the money is used. I think that's part of what got Glory's Corner reconstructed within the last year or two. And so it's really up to the county as to how they want to spend that money to improve the county road network. But we will have to pay a pretty hefty traffic impact fee to the county.
Any questions, Mr. Ray?
I'd just like to clarify something, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Ray, I know you were here in the room during Mr. Johnson's testimony. And the recollection, you had just spoken about your view that with Denton, that it was beneficial but not necessary.
Correct.
But I believe Mr. Johnson had testified there was a willingness to do a sort of an emergency access point.
Yes.
At Denton now, and then when Denton is completed, or the long portion of Denton, by the other developers to join up with Denton, correct?
That would make sense. The only thing I would say regarding that is I don't want to be at the meeting when I got to come back here and explain to the people that live on Denton that this is what we wanted to, connect them to this other development. Things can always, you know, what I'm saying is things in the future, it makes sense from an absolute point of view of full traffic circulation for everybody. But as Dr. Hofstein indicated before, when we originally came forth with the plan for this property, the people that lived on Whitlock and the people that lived on Denton Lane didn't want any connection to the community, and that's why the plan is the way it is. And that could certainly happen again in the future.
But the approved plan that you're looking to amend does show development of Denton Lane.
The approved plan does, yes. The plan that we have in front of the board this evening does not. It's a cul-de-sac. But we've agreed to the emergency vehicle access.
Right.
Which I think is the most important thing.
And the other statements that were made by Mr. Johnson.
Correct.
And then just for the other point of clarification, regarding the idea of the soft access or for emergency access at Whitlock, I believe there was prior testimony that there was a willingness to provide that soft access at Whitlock and at Denton. But your testimony seemed to indicate something different regarding Whitlock.
Well, I, I think.
To make sure that we understand the position of the applicant.
I mean, it's ultimately up to the board. I don't think Mr. Johnson has a preference for one road or the other. If the board decided you wanted emergency vehicle access from both Whitlock or Denton, it's not a big deal. It's really just whatever the fire department requires. It's a chain with, I think they call it a knockbox or something, just so the fire department or the emergency services people can get in. But to me, as Mr. Hyman had indicated before, it makes more sense if you're going to do one or the other to do Denton Lane because it gives you access to Whitesville, whereas Whitlock only gives you a second point of access to East Veterans.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ray, the traffic impact studies you provided are based upon two access points, correct?
Actually, the last one for the 205 was based upon having Denton Lane as well, too. But the traffic distribution, I just looked at the report, to Denton Lane was very minimal.
But my question is, is even if it's de minimis, the addition of that traffic to either of the other two intersections, would that negatively impact the level of service such that additional intersection improvements would be necessary?
Additional intersection improvements would not be necessary. We've already gone over this with the county, and just for, I don't know if you're.
Wanted you to go over it.
Yeah, no, the county has required widening at both the East Veterans access and the South Hope Chapel access to provide for turning lanes, and we've agreed to do that. Graham's office has already laid it out, given it to the county, and I think they've basically signed off on it. There will be a widening, and there will be turning lanes, and they will still operate safely and efficiently, in my estimation.
Thank you.
Hello, yes. So against my best judgment, I'm going to ask you an open-ended question. So you feel free to respond how you wish. I just wanted some color or more clarification around your letter C. You know, it talks about that, and maybe you have already, and it just didn't hit me. Where the service level was below E, however MRA has been in communication and so on and so forth. It's on page two.
Of what, what report? Which report? Give me the date.
Oh, oh, May 30th, 2025.
Excuse me?
Sorry, May 30th, 2025.
Okay, hang on one second.
Just so that we get on the same page.
I have it. It's in here. My file's quite, quite large.
Sure.
So I just got a file. I did bring the May 30th. That was a response to the Remington and Vernick.
Yeah, that's the one we were giving.
Give me a minute, okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, May 30th, I got it.
Yeah, second page, letter C. And with this start with, no response necessary. But that phrase there where some movements and approaches could operate at level service E.
Correct.
Which we know is a failure.
No, it's not.
Okay, good.
Level of service E only relates to the amount of delay at an unsign. I think I testified at the last time. When you get to level of service F, and even level of service F does not mean failure. It just relates to the amount of delay that's present at an intersection. So I can tell you what the difference between level of service E and level of service F is. If you just give me one minute, get the definitions. At a signalized intersection, level of service E is delay between 55 and 80 seconds per vehicle. Level of service F is delay in excess of 80 seconds.
That's seconds?
Seconds of delay, average delay, yes. So that's what it's related.
I was thinking minutes when I read it, I think.
No, 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 no.
Seconds.
Seconds.
Okay.
And looking at that item from the May 30th report, I think the point was the county has asked us to look at that intersection and come up with some suggestions to get the E to at least a D, and we've done that. We've recommended northbound and eastbound left-turn lanes at the intersection. The county's aware of that, and they are designing an improvement for that intersection. And they are aware of the fact that we've already recommended northbound and eastbound left turn, right-turn lanes. And as you probably are aware of, but maybe not, there are multiple projects in the area that contribute traffic to that intersection. And I'm assuming the county's going to use the traffic impact fees from everybody to do something and not tag one individual developer. I don't get to decide it, but if I was the county engineer, that's what I would do.
Unfortunately, you're the one here.
I know.
And you're getting paid the big bucks, so I apologize.
I don't know about that. He is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that response.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions for Mr. Ray? Mr. Hyman?
Can you just give us a little bit of information on how the house of worship would affect this application? Although you're not technically.
Yes.
Have it on this application. It was part of the broader application.
Yes, the house of worship is part of the application. It's going to be up by South Hope Chapel Road. It's going to have a connection to the internal roadway from the development that goes out to South Hope Chapel Road. And it's also going to have a separate right-in, right-out-only driveway to South Hope Chapel. That's what the county has agreed to. So it is part of the overall development plan. I'm assuming the expectation here is that a good number of the congregants will be members of the community that might not have to go out onto South Hope Chapel Road.
Are there any signals proposed on any of the?
No, no, not at the access points. They've been evaluated by my firm, by your experts, and by the county. And turning lanes are required. Left-turn lanes in particular are important, but not traffic signals. There isn't enough traffic to warrant signalization.
Even with the house of worship?
Even with the house of worship.
Any additional questions for Mr. Ray? Mr. Peters, Mr. Romeyer, Gina?
Thank you.
There's no other questions, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward and discuss the traffic testimony you've heard this evening, please do so at this time.
Sir, could I ask you to raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you will give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state your name and address for the record?
Joseph Rashudi, Jackson. My question is about with the traffic study, now with the high school changing, the morning traffic is going to be more crowded with the extra students that are no longer at Jackson Memorial. That Hope Chapel and East Veterans intersection is going to have a lot more student traffic, a lot more bus traffic. How is that going to affect?
Well, these studies were done well before the Board of Education decided to close Memorial and concentrate everything at Liberty. I would assume that they looked at that because it was their decision to do that. That would be their responsibility to look at their impact.
Okay. They're not here to answer that, how that's going to affect this.
They've got a phone number. Pick up the phone, call them, yeah.
Okay. The, with the number of houses, 150, add another 75 homes, basement apartments in those homes. And don't say it's not going to happen, but add 75 apartment homes, how much more traffic and for parking is that going to affect this development?
I thought we had this discussion at previous hearings, and I thought that issue was worked out, and there was an agreement not to have basement apartments unless I'm missing something.
I don't know if they have.
Does anybody remember that? That was, Dr. Hofstein, help.
No, I thought there were not going to be basements.
I agree. I thought I heard that at a previous meeting a year or two or three ago.
So there's guaranteed no basement apartments? Okay. And parking on the roads?
Yes.
Is there going to be parking on both sides of the street?
The streets are going to be 30 feet wide, curb to curb, and the RSIS permits parking on both sides of a 30-foot wide street. That's what's permitted by, under the state regulations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming forward, yes.
Okay, because I have questions for the developer, too.
Anyone else wishing to come forward regarding Mr. Ray's testimony? Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close public session.
Thank you.
Mr. Junko?
Mr. Chairman, we'd like the board to consider a vote tonight. And of course, I would ask the board to approve the application. Based on tonight's testimony, the number of variances that had been previously proposed have been reduced to the one, which is a use variance and a bulk variance at the same time. And other than that, I think the application is in full compliance with the regulations and with the modifications that have been made. And throughout the time I've been involved with the project, all of the comments from your consultants and from board members have been incorporated into this design over the years. And it's been a pretty long time we've been fooling around with this. But in any event, tonight, I think the application in front of you is very simple for consideration because it meets all of the standards, and the one variance is essentially de minimis. The testimony was that it has no significant impact. You have a peculiar, I wouldn't say peculiar, but not a common condition that that applies to the individual lot as a use variance in addition to being a bulk variance. And in that case, it's a very minor, if at all, impact, which would satisfy, and the testimony supports that. And that would provide for, in my view, adequate justification for the board to find it meets the standards of the municipal land use law in order to be entitled to a variance. And in that regard, the minimus impact is what I would think is most important for the board to consider, and the fact that a project of this size is rarely impacted by one particular condition. And what the board has done over this application and prior applications, and the prior boards, too, have looked at this as an entire project, and not only the impacts in any one location, but throughout the general area and along both of the major roads that it's surrounded. This doesn't change that. In fact, I think it improves it and enhances it. Therefore, I would suggest that this is an application that this board not only has the ability to approve, should approve because of all of those conditions, all of the compliance, and the lengthy period of back and forth and the time we've all had, both sides, to study and come up with these solutions. I think that the applicant has dealt with every major issue that the board has presented over the years and tonight. And in fact, the board has understood compliance and the minimal impacts of some of these conditions. And that brings us to, in my view, a very desirable project for the community and for the developer, and that it should operate at an excellent level of efficiency. Based on all of those factors and the testimony presented tonight, I am satisfied that there's an adequate point, an adequate record in front of you to justify the grant of the requested variances and to remit the approval of this application. Of course, that's your decision, but I ask you to be persuaded by me. That's kind of my job here. But in any event, I think that my clients have taken every step to meet those conditions, and our clients' consultants have worked with the township consultants to come to this point. This application is entitled to an approval, in my opinion, which doesn't count as a vote, but I would like it to hopefully be somewhat persuasive. So I would ask the board to approve the application.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and open this to, Gina, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to quickly add a point that, well, to reiterate, actually. The fencing that we had very early on in testimony kind of nailed down with the four-foot black chain link with plantings, that be a stipulation of approval should the board so choose to approve. Also, I did want to just touch base on that recreation lot. If we could just kind of nail down what that is going to be or what's, what we're asking the board for approval for just from a resolution compliance standpoint, just so when those zoning applications do come in my office, I know specifically what is approved for, approved versus what is being requested. That may possibly, depending, what I've seen in recent applications, depending what they're requesting in the recreation area, if another variance for fencing or anything like that could be, could possibly be triggered.
Mr. Junko, can you give a quick summary of the recreation area?
Well, the recreation area is shown on the plan. Our clients have agreed to that, and it wasn't modified by this application. It's part of the approved plan already.
Can you read it, Gina? It's very little.
It's so tiny.
So my question was based off the RVE review letter dated March 27, 2025, on page two, where it was outlined what the applicant was currently seeking. I amended preliminary and final major subdivision approval to amend the approval previously granted by the zoning board with Resolution 2023-17. The amended plans consist of the following. Number one, 190 lots for new single-family dwellings, of which 12 lots include stormwater basins. Number two, two lots for existing single-family dwellings. I'm just going to skip a bunch. Number four, one lot for a recreation area. So that is why, that was the basis of my question.
And Madam Chair, if I may? On the full site plan, on sheet four, it shows what's proposed, and I can just clarify. There's an existing community center, 3,365 square feet to be, to remain, and then proposing a, in the recreation area, a 60-foot-by-100-foot open play field, and then also a timber playset. And I understand that was part of the previous approval.
If I may, Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
That particular design and those facilities were part of a specific port, part of one of the prior applications. I can't quite remember which one it was, but we went through it in detail, and the size of the clubhouse or the recreation building was decided and agreed, and those additional facilities. At one point, there was a proposal for a basketball court, and the board felt that that would be too disruptive for the community, and that's how we ended up with the site, the recreation facilities on the site. It also, I think, ties into the walking path.
My apologies if my question was outside the scope. Again, I was kind of based, my question was kind of based off the Remington Vernicle Review Letter. So if that isn't being, any requests being changed to that, then my question is satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. So before I give it to the board, I'm going to open it to the public for discussion. Anyone wishing to come forward and make comment can do so at this time.
I'm still sworn.
You would still remain under oath.
Okay. I was at home watching on YouTube, and I says, I got to come down here. So I don't know if I missed about the recreation area. I know there's a community center, probably like a clubhouse with the rec room, but tot lot. I think you mentioned something about a lot of 100 feet by 150. That's a very small lot for all them homes for kids to be playing in. I think they need a bigger tot lot. There's going to be a lot of kids there. They need to have some more green space. And another thing, if we can zoom in on the map up there by the lake and the properties, the lot lines, footage, is that going into the lake?
This was comment period.
Mr. Rashudi, this is, this is, you had the opportunity to ask questions earlier. You have every opportunity to make a comment now. So.
Well, my concern was if the length of those lots are going into the lake. You know, I don't know. If it's 120 feet long and 10 or 20 feet's in the lake, but the continent is quote dry land, I don't know. That was my concern.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and make comments at this time? Seeing no one else come forward, we're going to go ahead and close public session. Board accepts us for discussion.
I guess I'll just start. So what I'm being asked to vote on is two, two very specific varies. I know we spoke about a lot of things today, but is it right that the vote, the motion that's going to be made at some point, it's simply about the fence, whether it's four feet or six feet? Correct?
No.
No?
I mean, you're right. So the application is an application for an amended site plan and preliminary and final site plan and subdivision plan. So that plan actually has a number of variations from what was previously approved by this board. There's a reduction in the number of the single-family lots, not a reduction in the affordable housing. There is a reconfiguration of some of the lots, and there is the change that was proposed to the access point or to Denton Road. So there is an application for approval of the overall plan. What you're talking about, I think, are some of, and the variance that was meant, I believe that there's only one variance. They changed it, so there's only one variance that's being requested, which is the variance allowing the creation of the flag lot at 1.08, which then will reduce the frontage on lot 1.09 from 80 feet to, I believe it was 62.6 feet. Then the other things we've been discussing are conditions that could, if the board wishes, be put on the approval. Those conditions to this point are, you know, the standard conditions about compliance with outside agencies, and then the the fence, I believe there, it's not a question of four or six. You can condition that however you want. The discussion from the majority of the board was for a four-foot black chain link fence with landscaping around, and that was around the smaller detention basins. There's already proposed fencing around the larger detention basins. And then there was also the condition, there was an acceptance of the comments, except for the comments regarding lots 108 and 109, from Mr. Peters and Mr. Romer-Meyers' reports. There was a discussion about whether there would be one HOA and a representation was made that there would be for the entire project. There was also a representation made, and you may want to condition on not having basements in the projects. There was a condition also suggested that it would be open to all, for purchase. And then the discussion that was had regarding the access points at Whitlock and at Denton. There was a representation made, where you may want to condition it that there would be soft access, which we've heard described as a fend, a chain, at both Whitlock and Denton. You could condition it one or the other, or both. And that there was also representation that once Denton has been developed by the other developers who have existing approvals requiring development, that that the cul-de-sac portion of this project would then be connected to Denton. So those, those are potential conditions that the board.
Wow, that was a lot. Okay, so when we, this is all one, so when we vote, the simple yes or no, it's going to be?
Well, no, no, those were, let me be clear. Those were some of the representations and conditions that were discussed. Whether all of those or some of them or different versions of them are incorporated in what the board goes, wants to include, should there be a motion for approval, that's after the board, that's what you're discussing now.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I want to be clear, whatever the, how the motion is worded, that I'm careful, if I say yes, I'm saying yes to which one of all or all or what. So, because there's a lot there, obviously, right? Okay, thank you.
Questions?
This is a question. Gina, to all the conditions that you add, those are in addition to what's already been approved?
Correct. So these are only for this, we're going to amend the site plan.
So how does that work? Meaning, the original approval, for example, had the house of worship, that's not part of this, going to call amended site plan. How does that?
So that is an existing, so this is, if you think about it, there was a site plan that was approved. And so everything that's on that site plan was there and would remain there except these elements that are being amended here. So that's the reduction in the number of units, the reconfiguration, the access issues, and, you know, any, any other variation. So the things that were, and again, it's, this is not a new, it's not an application for entirely new site plan, it's an amendment of that existing. So the elements there, the affordable housing, the house of worship, those things remain as part of the plan.
So from the resolution standpoint, for example, how does that work out? I mean, the old resolution is going to be amended because they're changing different parts of this?
No, so we wouldn't be amending the old resolution. What we would be saying, or what the board would be saying, should you choose to act in this manner, is that you're approving the application to amend that site plan. So that, any part of that resolution that does not refer to these aspects that are being changed would remain in effect. So all the provisions of that resolution pertaining to the house of worship, to the affordable housing, to the things that have not been changed remains in effect. It, this would be an approval only to change those portions that have been requested. And then any conditions that related to the changed portions and change aspects would depend on conditions and representations made on those changed elements.
Thank you. I just want to clarify on that Denton Road, I'm sorry to go there again, I just want to make sure that it's being connected currently, which is not going to be fully developed until the other, until the other developers develop the road.
Right, so that's obviously going to depend on you, but I believe that the representation made by Mr. Johnson was that the cul-de-sac would be created, but there would be that emergency access to what was described as a paved cartway sufficient for emergency vehicles and access now. So it would be essentially, the road would, the, the developed road would end, but there would be enough of an access. That was, I think, the suggestion in the testimony of Mr. Ray was, it was a chain with bollards so that cars couldn't drive through now, but emergency vehicles would be able to get through, and that when Denton Road was completed by the other developers who have that obligation under approvals from the planning board, then there would be a full connection.
So just to clarify, you said that it would be still the cul-de-sac. Would it end by that area of that connection in a circle, like it's larger than the regular road, or it would just be prepped to be able to get connected already?
I can't answer that question.
I'm trying to understand how it's going to.
As I under.
On the map.
Right, so, you know, I don't know, Mr. Junko, if you want to open it back up or provide anything on that, because all I can say. You know, if they don't want to get that clarification on, then that would be, you would have to condition it on whether you were willing to have it be completed as the cul-de-sac, as long as there was the emergency access, or if you were requiring that it be prepared for connection, presumably with the absence of curbing, et cetera.
Well, really, my question is because it would just affect that lot, 3.45, if we don't have that cul-de-sac.
And I, yeah. I'm sorry, I did miss a condition before, which was the representation for lots 321, 322, and 323, that there would be an adjustment of those lot lines so as to provide 80 feet frontages, which would require revision of the lines for some of the adjacent lots. And that representation was made. I forgot to mention that earlier. But to go back to the Denton part.
Right, so what I just said was, if it's just a regular road and it's not a cul-de-sac, it would affect probably lot 3.45. I'm not sure how that would play out.
Right, and, and so if it would affect that, and you feel that that effect would require it either to. Oh, Mr. Junko, you'd like to?
On lot 3.45, the cul-de-sac would, could be, when, excuse me, when it connects in the future to Denton Lane, the cul-de-sac can just become a street. If the, if the issue is, will that be part of that connection, in other words, straight, bringing the line straight, which our client would be willing to do, and I would expect that that is something that would be the most usual and common approach to modifying the Swan Court. Well, it's actually Denton Lane and Swan Court intersection. I guess what that's, but the.
Mr. Hyman, does that, does that answer your question?
I'm just asking how they are proposing. Meaning if we're going to have a, if we're going to have a that circle at the end, and then let's say in a year or two, they're going to connect it to Denton, then you're having a straight going into a bubble, then continuing straight, like it's a little bit.
Yeah, I think Mr. Junko was saying.
Some kind of clarification.
It appears that Mr. Johnson is going to look at that issue and either confirm or revise what Mr. Junko said, which is that they would straighten it out.
So typically.
Mr. Johnson, you remain under oath. Yeah. Yes.
Randy, could you explain, Mr. Johnson, could you explain to the board how that would be?
Sure.
Designed, developed, or redeveloped?
So as you see it on the plan, it would be built as a permanent cul-de-sac today. That's a, that lot 3.45 is a pump station lot. Once the connection gets made, which would be straight through to Denton Lane, that half of the cul-de-sac would be removed and curbing put straight so that the road goes straight.
Thank you.
Right, and the plan does show dedicated to the JTMUA that lot.
And that's not going to be an issue, straightening it out later? Question is, when is that time? What's going to trigger it, I guess, to require that? Correct, yes. My question, my question is, when are, when are we going to, what's going to, procedure going to be put in place to require the applicant to make that change from a cul-de-sac into a straightened line?
Are you saying what would be the triggering event?
Correct.
I would believe it would be the completion of Denton Lane, so.
We would have to stipulate that.
Yes.
In the resolution.
Yes, and that would mean that when Denton Lane was open to traffic from that portion of connection with this project out to Whitesville.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just want to make a comment to the gentleman who came up, and he made a comment, and I feel he was dismissed. And I don't know if maybe Ms. Sipriani can explain to in light, yeah, when this original application was approved, Memorial was Memorial and Liberty was Liberty. Now, in light of Memorial merging to Liberty, yes, there is a whole new traffic pattern that was not considered when this application was approved. So I just want you to know, these are county roads, especially people, we live here. I don't want you to think, or anyone in our. I don't want you to think, or anyone in our town, that this is a dismissed thing, and I think if Ms. Sipriani wants to explain exactly why, we can't really get a new updated traffic study for this.
Certainly, Mr. Such. So, Mr. Such is asking me to, and I think he explained it pretty well, but the, you know, additional part is that we can only consider what's been presented here, what the, the traffic patterns that were required to be looked at then. However, those, since those are county roads, when the Board of Ed went to make these changes, they would have had to review those issues with the county, and it is the county that retains jurisdiction over those roads, and how development on those roads needs to be addressed. So I, I think that, Mr. Such is saying, it's an obvious, you know, thing that we all know is happening in real time, and is, is going to have some impacts, but the board at this time on this application cannot require this applicant to make those studies.
Also, the, to expand on that, that we have to only rule on traffic at the entrance and exit of the site. The rest is up to the county to fix, that's just the way case law reads, and we have to go by it. I just have one comment to make, and it's a touchy comment, but it's been on a lot of minds. We're not an enforcement agency, but hopefully that, that when these homes are marketed, that fair housing laws are followed by whomever the marketer is. I think that would go a long way to make many people in the town not feel that a special housing project is being built for certain people and not others. Fair housing laws, federal laws, if I'm not mistaken, and everybody who has any, any kind of house, residence up for sale, has to follow those guidelines.
Yes, and, well, and as for the affordable housing portion, the marketing of those units is dictated by state law.
Any other questions, comments, discussion of a potential motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, following all the guidelines that Ms. Sipriani mentioned, and anything else that, that should fit in.
All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Mr. Hudek?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Such?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
It's been granted, thank you.
Yeah.
That's good.
We're going to take a one-hour break to...
No.
We can work in the...
The ordinance change, the application no longer requires a variance from the conditional use standards for the house of worship. However, there are several bulk variances related to the house of worship, which John will go into more detail with. However, also, the applicant is requesting now a conditional use variance for the wrestling school at the rear of the property to allow it to operate as a quasi-public or private club. Because when it was approved in 2009, it was approved as a home occupation because Mr. Rivera lived there in the single-family home. So definitely a little confusing. Good test exam for a law student, I think. The board planner has identified additional variances related to the house of worship, which again, I'm going to let John go into detail. And he'll also go into the two existing conditions related to the wrestling school. So if we could just have John sworn in, we can begin his testimony, which will really wrap up the application. But I do have in the audience our site engineer, a representative from the congregation, and Mr. Rivera, just in case there's any questions that pops up that was not addressed the last time we were here. But I'm not intending on calling them as direct witnesses. Thank you.
Before you get started, sir, Ms. Jennings, can I ask you a question? When this first, and I'd have to go back to my notes to get the exact date I went there, so forgive me, but one of the early dates that was on the agenda, I went to the property and there happened to be a woman there. She said she was renting. You said that the rabbi lives there?
Correct. The rabbi and his wife live in the home. Rent-free. The congregation, basically Israel Bernbaum is the owner of the property and he's a member of the congregation, and he lets the rabbi live there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand to swear the test, when you give this board with the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And can you please state your name, call the case.
Certainly. My name is John Tykina. T as in Thomas, A I, K as in Kelly, I N as in Nicholas, A. I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been since I completed my studies at Rutgers University in 1992. I've spent the last 32 years doing this, testifying before planning zoning boards around, across New Jersey and around the country. I've had the pleasure of appearing here on several occasions in the last two years.
And Mr. Tykina, I hope I pronounced that right. This board accepts your credentials.
Thank you. And you did pronounce that correctly. Thank you.
Okay, you're too good, John. You've had an opportunity to review the application and the property, and you understand the variances that the applicant is seeking. If you could go through, in your professional opinion, indicate whether or not you think the applicant has satisfied both the positive and the negative criteria.
Great. So we are here this evening for, I guess, three different types of relief in kind of two different sets. So the first thing we need is a D1 variance, or a use variance, to permit two principal uses on the lot. So initially, we will have a shul and a private recreation use. That is what exists today, and that's what will be there at the outset. So that's kind of our initial approval that we are seeking to continue. And then ultimately, we will have a private recreation use, which is a permitted conditional use in the district, and a single-family home that will exist on the property into the future. So we will continue to have two use, two principal uses on the property. They will just kind of change in the middle once the new house of worship that Ms. Jennings mentioned is up and running. So and I guess we'll have a timeframe for when that transitions. Connected with that, we do need a D3 variance for a conditional use that does not meet all the conditions for the private recreation use. As we said, it was previously approved as a home occupation. The proprietor of that business no longer lives on the property, so it's not a home occupation, kind of by definition. But it does meet many of the conditions for a private recreation use. We just do not meet all of them. Notably setbacks, buffers.
Could you just repeat what you just said? I couldn't hear that.
Repeat that.
About the recreation use.
Certainly. So the recreation use was originally approved in 2009 as a home occupation. That proprietor of that business, the wrestling school, no longer lives on the property. So it can't be a home occupation, kind of by definition. We could have sought a conditional use for a home occupation without living there, but that kind of doesn't make any sense. I'm a big proponent, if it walks and looks like a duck, it's a duck. So we meet much more of the private recreation use. We just need some relief from a minor setback and the buffer. So and I'll detail that in a little bit. And then finally, we need some C variance relief, or bulk variance relief, for the shul to permit an accessory use in the front yard, because the home is an accessory parsonage to the shul, and it's located in front of the shul, or in front of the tent. So that is a variance there. And we need a side yard setback variance for the setback of the shul at 40 feet where 50 feet is required. And then finally, we need side buffer relief where 50 feet is required, and we only have 25 feet on the one side of the property related to the shul. So kind of three different sets of approvals, and I'll take you through them kind of one at a time. Our engineer did a nice job of describing the property and where it is and all that, and that's shown up on A1. You see the property indicated on the, on the right, indicated where the site is. And the location of the newly proposed house of worship is shown on the left, near the clearing on the left there. So you can see that they are in close proximity, and as you know, that's important for the congregation. On the, on Shabbos, they do walk to services as well as on holy days. So again, the site is 4.3 acres in the Arthur Residential District. And we've described what exists on the property. We have a single-family dwelling, a shul, a detached garage that is more associated with the pole barn that's used for the wrestling school, and some bitumous concrete driveways and parking spaces. The majority of the property that is not occupied by the shul and the wrestling school is wooded. So specifically, so I can get the citations down here, and they, we want to make sure we get them on the record correctly. We need a use variance from Section 244-162 to permit multiple principal structures on a lot used for single-family residential purposes, and that will be in the ultimate And your planner has also said we need a variance to have two principal uses on the property at the beginning. And again, I'm not going to object. We'll just provide the proofs for that use variance as well. Likewise, we need bulk variances from 244-46G4 relating to the house of worship, and these concern the minimum side yard setback, which is 40 feet proposed where 50 feet is required, minimum landscape buffer, which is 25 feet proposed where 50 feet is required, and to allow the accessory structure, which is the home, to continue in the front yard. We also need a conditional use variance to... We need bulk variances from 244-46G relating to the house of worship, returning the use's location on a residential access street. The height of the accessory structure, though, I believe we comply with that. The regulation allows that height of the accessory structure to be up to 25 feet, and it allows it to be increased as long as you have the corresponding increase in setbacks, which we provide. So accordingly, I believe the 27-foot height of the accessory structure for the residents does comply, and to allow parking in the front yard. And they would all be existing conditions that we would seek to continue. Then in terms of the wrestling school, we need a conditional use variance from Section 244-129 to permit the existing wrestling school to operate as a quasi-public or private recreation use without complying with the building setback, which is 50 feet required, and we have 48.9 feet, I believe. And we have parking setbacks. We are providing 25 feet as a parking setback, and the requirement is 50 feet in the ordinance. We also need...
I'm sorry. Can you just go back a little bit? I'm trying to take the notes. And so those numbers again, with the school, how much is required and how much?
For the wrestling school? The setback for the wrestling school, the requirement is 50 feet, and we are at 48.9 feet. So we're off by a foot, 1.1 feet. And the parking setback, we are seeking the same 25-foot buffer setback for the parking where 50 feet is required. And then finally, we need bulk, a bulk variance for the accessory structure, which is the existing detached garage. The standard would be, would be 30 or 50 feet, and we are at 21.3 feet, I believe. Right?
I don't want to interrupt your train of thought. You said though the bulk was 30 or 50?
The standard, the standard in the district kind of flip-flops back and forth. The standard for the, for a home is at, is it 30 feet for a single-family home? It's also the same for the shul, for the accessory structures. There's a standard in the ordinance for accessory structures. If it's a barn, which this isn't, that would be 75 feet, and then the other standards for accessory structures would be 50 feet. So it's kind of a little bit all over the map. I believe for belt and suspenders purposes, I think it'd be appropriate to say the requirement would be 50 feet, and we are at 21 point... This is really going to drive me nuts now. 21, we'll just say 21 feet provided. And that is an existing condition for that existing garage that is next to the wrestling school.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe that is all of the variance relief that we are seeking. I gave you back your notice. There were some other, there were some other variances that were mentioned in Mr. Peters' I believe that I've explained most of them. I talked about the height. Again, it provides for the, if you provide an additional foot of setback, you get an additional foot of height, two feet of setback, and you get an additional foot of height. So we're well set back from the road, so we can avail ourselves to that provision. The last element that was, that was some question was parking. And I think it has been appropriately, correctly calculated now, and we talked about it last meeting, that it would be 17 parking spaces required for the shul. It would be 30 parking spaces. 17 for the shul, 41 parking spaces, excuse me, for the wrestling school, and three spaces required for the, for the residents. For a total of 61 parking spaces required, there are 67 physical parking spaces included. And that does not, they include electric vehicles, but that 67 count does not include the electric vehicle bonus, which would be an additional six spaces. So for the math, it'd be 61 required and 73 provided. Because we can't get a bonus that exceeds 10% of the number required. So then the maximum bonus would be six, and we have eight total that are proposed.
So in terms of the use variance, our use variance testimony, the first use variance we need is to have multiple uses on the property. We have a shul and a, and a private wrestling, a private club recreation school, recreation use.
Keen, I apologize for interrupting, but I...
No, no, please, anytime.
I don't want to get so far along and then have to come back and sort of refocus you. As it relates to parking, I'm not sure that your numbers add up to the numbers on the site plan cover sheet or in our letter. Ms. Jennings, I don't know if you want your planner to run through the numbers, or your engineer, but I don't think what the planner just testified to reconciles with what's on the variance planner in our report. Maybe we'll just leave it at that and come back to it later. I want the board to understand that I don't necessarily agree with his testimony as it relates to parking at this moment.
Okay. We can have Mr. Hopp come back up there.
Thank you.
So in terms of the D1 variance, the first concept that they will talk about for the variance for the shul and the wrestling school, first of all, the shul is an inherently beneficial use, as you know. So we would, by definition, meet the positive criteria as an inherently beneficial use does promote the public, the public welfare and the public interest. So the standard for the board is called a CECA balancing test. It's a case called CECA, the Board of Adjustment and Wall from 1992. And again, very specific, we have to identify what the public interest is at stake. In this instance, house of worship is inherently beneficial. The courts have held their religious activity itself as a furtherance of public morals and general welfare. Identify the detrimental impact that will ensue from the grant of the variance. In this instance, in that we have a site that is about 50% larger than set forth in the zone. We have about 4.3 acres, where three acres are required. We are substantially meeting the bulk standards in terms of lot coverage, building coverage, et cetera. We are providing for sufficient parking, and I believe there certainly will be sufficient parking, whatever math we ultimately agree on. We'll all agree that it's enough. And so there are no detrimental impacts. The site will be sufficiently landscaped and buffered, even though it does not provide for the full 50 feet, it only has 25 feet. Is the board able to reduce any detrimental impact by imposing reasonable conditions on the use? The applicant is willing to comply with any of the reasonable conditions set forth in the board, whether suggested by your professionals in their letters. We have no objection. And then finally, you weigh the positive and negative criteria and determine whether, on balance, the grant of the variance would cause substantial detriment to the public good in our negative criteria. All of our variances come to the negative criteria. They all come back to those same two standards of not having a substantial detriment to the public good, not having a substantial impairment to the zone plan and the master plan. So if I may indulge the board, I'll address the negative criteria once at the end for all of the variances, and I believe that would be suitable. In terms of our ongoing, our ongoing variance, that will be the variance from 244-162, where we'd have a second use on a lot that would contain a single-family home. So we'd have a single-family home, and we would have a private wrestling school. In this instance, that is a full D1 variance. So we all, the full standards come into play, and as you know, that roadmap is laid out by the case Medici v. PPR from, from South Plainfield in 1987, before my career began. And again, you know the findings. There's five findings you need to make. First and foremost, that the site is particularly suited for the use. Secondly, we need to talk about special reasons or the purposes, advancing the purposes of zoning. Thirdly, we need to deal with the Medici reconciliation, or why didn't the governing body zone this property that way to provide for the two uses? And then the final two, as always, are the negative criteria, that we not have a substantial detriment to public good, and we don't have a substantial impairment to the zone plan and the master plan. In this instance, in terms of particular suitability, we have a property that, for better or worse, has operated for exactly as this use since 2009. So we have a history where this property has operated well. It's operated without incident, without complaint. We have a situation just where, again, the homeowner and the proprietor doesn't live there anymore. So that is the standard. But in terms of all the negative criteria, there hasn't been any detriment to having a home and a wrestling school on the property. There's sufficient parking, there's sufficient buffers, the site operates well, it operates safely and efficiently. So there's been no issue, and it has been there. And then as part of this approval, the improvements that will be made in terms of buffering and landscaping, et cetera, will only enhance that condition. And again, it'll continue to be suitable. In terms of the special reasons, I'd submit to you there are three. A, to encourage municipal action and guide appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which promotes health, safety, and welfare. G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses in open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And finally, I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. In this instance, again, we have, we have two uses. We have private recreation, which again, promotes the public health, and has been an active, an active use in the township, well-used by our youth and now by our adults. As we testified last time, we have folks from the congregation that are now taking classes at the private recreation facility for public, you know, for their own personal safety and their own personal welfare. So again, a nice, a nice compliment there. There's certainly sufficient space in this site. The 4.3 acres provides for all the necessary parking and buffers and activity for both uses. They'll be able to continue without incident as they have for the last 15 years. And then finally, with the improvements that we'll make in terms of landscaping and site improvements, we'll certainly have a more desirable visual environment. I think the applicant and its professional team has done a nice job of laying out the development, making sure that we have adequate access, we have adequate parking, we have adequate access for our emergency vehicles and emergency responders in a way that is certainly represents good design. Regardless, the proposal will have additional positive benefits. We believe that there's sufficient space, as I said. In the short term, the house of worship activities are there, and they clearly promote the public good. And as Mr. Ray testified, we have minor traffic generation for the uses, as evidenced by his, by his traffic counts and his findings, that there'll be no detriment to the levels of service on the adjoining roadways. In terms of our, in terms of our D3 variance, would be our next, our next set of variances, if you will. There we have a private recreation facility. There are several standards. We talked about how the, Mr. Rivera talked about how the place operated. Again, it operates generally in the afternoons into the evenings. There's no conflicts with the, with the shul in the short term, and no conflicts with the residents in the long term. Minimum lot area of one acre, that condition is met. Building setbacks that need to be met. The minimum side yard setback for the principal structure is 50 feet. We have the existing pole barn is 48.9 feet, so we are 1.1 foot shy of that requirement. Maximum building coverage is 25%. That, that condition is met. The condition for minimum unoccupied open space, that condition is 25%. That condition is not met because the open, primarily because the open space will not be dedicated. The applicant is proposing to keep all 4.3 acres as private. So while there is area in the rear of the property, that does range between 15 and 35%, depending on the calculation, that land will not be dedicated as open space, and accordingly, we are not meeting that standard. So the area is there, it's going to be green back there, we're just going to keep it in private hands as opposed to having a public dedication. Number six is no parking area, recreation area shall be located closer to 50 feet to a side or rear property line. The condition is not met, our proposed parking is 25 feet, is 25 feet from the side property line. Swimming pools is not applicable, and the off-street parking requirements shall be met by 244-197. So for the wrestling school, it's 4,100 square feet. The standard is 1 per 100, so there are 41 spaces required for the wrestling school, and there will be 41 spaces proposed for the wrestling school. Right now, there's less than that, and the applicant and the wrestling school can operate with less than that. And I'm sure that if and when we get the site plan, that the board and the applicant will certainly be talking about potentially banking some of those parking spaces as being excess. So there are the conditions that we don't meet. The standard for D3 variance is set forth, again, by Case Coventry, the Board of Adjustment. And the standard there is, can the site still accommodate the use even though you don't meet those conditions? So does the site still remain appropriate to be a private recreation school even though it's 1.1 feet closer to the side yard? Even though our parking is 20, at 25 feet, not at 50 feet? And even though we have open space in the rear of the site that's private and not dedicated? And I think that it's clear, first of all, that it's operated for the last 15 years, that the site certainly remains appropriate even though we don't meet those three conditions. And that is the standard, and then obviously, we'll have our negative criteria. In terms of our, in terms of our bulk variances, again, we have the bulk variances related to the shul in the short term, where we have a setback of 40 feet where 50 feet is required. We have a, and we have a accessory building in the front yard at, which is not permitted. And then finally, we have parking at 25 feet as opposed to 50 feet. In each instance, I think these are, these are C1 variances. They specifically relate to this piece of property. They are existing conditions on the site that are there today. The, the home is in front of the shul, that's an existing condition. The parking is currently much closer than 25 feet. We're pulling it back to be 25 feet to at least meet half of that standard. We think that given the narrowness of the site, a 25-foot, a 25-foot parking setback is sufficient, and we will provide sufficient landscaping in accordance with the recommendations of your professionals to make sure that that buffering is adequate. And then the existing, the existing side yard setback at 40, at 40 feet as opposed to 50 feet, that would be a C2 variance. We think on, bound, the standard there is pulling to be South Plainfield again, and it's, the standard is on balance that does the, do the benefits of the overall project outweigh the detriment of that one-dimensional side yard variance? So again, I think that in this instance, given the overall benefits, having the shul on the, on the site, predominantly meeting the standards, having that one deficiency for that side yard, albeit in a temporary condition, is certainly a reasonable accommodation and is on balance. I think that the benefits of granting the variance outweigh the detriments in that instance. The, make sure I hit them all. The last setback variance that I guess we have to address is the existing side yard for the, for the wrestling school, has the detached garage that's really associated with the wrestling school. Again, that side yard is 21 feet, whereas I guess 50 feet would be required, which would be the same as the principal building in that instance. Again, the garage has been there for a long time. It is, well, it's surrounded by woods where it's situated in the rear of the property. So again, I think that leaving it there, there's certainly no detriment there. And if we have to enhance the landscaping in accordance with the professionals, we'd certainly be happy to do that. But there's certainly no, no detriment to leaving the garage where it exists. The final standard, the final thing for the board to consider are the negative criteria. There are two prongs, as they say. The first prong is no variance shall be granted if it would be a substantial detriment to public good. So again, in this instance, we have really three different uses. We have a shul in the initial instance with a private recreation facility, and then we'll have a private recreation facility with a single-family home. None of these uses are noxious uses. They are all uses that are permitted in the district in one way or the other. They've been there for some time at this point. They've operated safely and efficiently. There haven't been any detriment to any surrounding neighbors from any of the uses for that long period of time. The underlying zoning already recognizes the consistency of providing for these uses by including the house of worship as permitted use, having the, obviously, single-family home as permitted use, and having the private recreation facility as a conditional use. And we do meet the majority of those conditions, really with our, our one detriment being the buffer for the parking. the buffer for the parking. Everything else is fairly de minimis in that regard. So, in terms of the various planning community objectives. Did I miss a page? So, in terms of the, in terms of the standards, you know, as testified by our engineer, the proposal really does a good job of kind of tying the different uses together and providing for the transition between the shul to the house, to the private recreation facility in the ultimate condition. The property appears to be a single-family residence from the street. Having the, the home in the front really makes that, really provides that to continue. All the activity really exists in the rear portion of the property, which is surrounded by trees and screened and buffered. The applicant proposes a rain garden to add some visual appeal and provide some stormwater management. And again, the house of worship is compatible with the surroundings in the short term, and obviously the single-family home would be as well. The second prong is that the variance should not be granted if it will impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Again, all three uses, house of worship, private recreation facility, single-family home, are all provided for in the R3 district in residential areas. The intent and purpose of the, of the zoning ordinance mirrors that of the MOUL. It provides multiple purposes of the zoning or advanced, especially guiding the appropriate use and development of all lands in the township in a manner which promotes the health, safety, and welfare, as the inherently beneficial use does. It aligns with the following goals and objectives of the Master Plan Amendment from 2023. To achieve a pattern and mix of land uses that meets various community planning objectives, including the provision of quality residential neighborhoods, the protection of natural resources, economic development of the community, and creation of a livable and desirable community in the township. So the wrestling school is an integral part of the, of the Jackson community. The proposed house of worship is synergistic with the residential use, provides a community gathering, space for local residents. This application was borne out, again, of the inherent need for the community to worship close to their homes. We want to encourage the use of planning techniques that will effectively integrate desirable residential communities via what commercial and service uses, resource protection, and open space, to provide for limited non-residential development in residential zones while protecting the existing character of the neighborhood. And again, much of this has been there for many years, wrestling school for more than 15, and to protect the integrity of the existing residential neighborhood by ensuring that any new infill is compatible and well buffered. So they are all standards in your current master plan that we believe are advancing, and we are certainly in no way impairing them. So again, I think you have the ability to, to kind of run down and, and make all the requisite findings for D1 use, for two uses on the property, for whether it be in the short term or in the long term, for the conditional use to allow the private wrestling school to continue, and finally, for the bulk variances that are related to the shul in the short term and to provide, to the private recreation facility in the long term. You have the ability to make the requisite findings for the positive criteria. We talked about the purposes of zoning will be, will be advancing. And finally, I believe the, the applicant has shown that through its site plan, its buffering, and the arrangement of the property, that we can satisfy the negative criteria, not have a detriment to the public good, and we are not impairing the zone plan and the master plan in this instance. So I think you can make all the requisite findings. I'm available for your questions.
Mr. Rivera?
I got to tell you, you know, sitting here listening to your speech, what I see is smokescreen and misdirection, that we're not really focusing on the problem. And I believe that this, this application should be broken into two different parts. One being the school, and that decision being made solely on that, and that's the wrestling school, and the other one on this tent. This tent that was illegally erected, and, and can you tell me when the tent was put up?
The tent was originally put up during COVID.
During COVID, COVID was a long time ago.
I know, but it was permitted during COVID, and I think as we explained in the very first hearing, the rabbi of this particular shul is wheelchair-bound. So they were originally doing their prayers in the single-family home, which they're allowed to do since the rabbi lives there. Over time, the congregation has grown, COVID hit, they went outside, they went back inside, they have to take the rabbi, carry him down into the basement in order to have room for everybody to pray. The congregation has grown in the past five years, that's why they were, we got an approval for a permanent shul, and so the tent accommodates them now. And I think you're right, you do kind of have to break this up into two, because the only reason we're before this board is not because of the shul, it's because of the wrestling school. The wrestling school triggers the two D variances that we need, because there's two principal uses on the lot, and the wrestling school does not meet the conditional use standards. The shul itself only needs two bulk variances. Otherwise, it is a permitted use now in the zone. When we first filed our application in 2023, it was permitted as a conditional use, and we did not meet all the conditions. The ordinance was revised. The applicant does not want to see Mr. Rivera kicked out of his wrestling school. But at the end of the day, I don't represent Mr. Rivera or the wrestling school, so if the board is not inclined to grant the D variances, I would ask them to make a motion to approve the shul, because the, just both variances.
But see, here's the problem with the shul. The shul was erected illegally, okay, without any, without any approvals, and without any inspections or any regard to safety or, or any of those things. It just got erected, and it's been operating all this time, because, you know, we've, how many postponements have we had? A year and a half, we've gone.
That's mostly because of you guys. Honestly, I've came here many times and sat here for hours waiting to be heard, so I don't really think that's very fair. Yes, we were carried and carried and carried and carried.
Carried and carried while this illegal structure continues to operate, which, which I don't think is fair. You know, listen, if, if that got erected next door to me, I'd have a problem with it, and I feel for the residents in that surrounding area that we might not have a lot here, but, you know, I, I have to feel sorry for them. And, and I believe that these are two separate issues, the school and then the tent.
I don't disagree with that part of your analysis. It is two separate issues.
Right, but we're being, you know, led to, down a path that's focusing more on the school than it is on this illegal structure.
The structure, that's why we're here, seeking approval from the board. I can't fix what happened in the past, but again, the tent was started when COVID hit, just like all the restaurants put little outdoor facilities, nobody really had approvals, and eventually were pulled back. In the interim, you have to understand, I know you've heard other cases regarding shuls. This particular community cannot drive on the Fridays and on their holidays, so they search and search and search for a lot near their community. This was a temporary fix, but the community has grown, so they have gone out and found another piece of property and have an approval from the planning board, and they have to build the, the shul. They have to be able to worship somewhere. The ordinance has changed. They're now permitted. So, yes, you can deny the application, and I would just recommend my client refile with the planning board and take out the, the wrestling school. So we're really still here because of the wrestling school. And I would be ashamed that Mr. Rivera's school that's been going on since 2009 gets denied, but again, I don't represent the wrestling school, I represent the shul. I recommended to them to get rid of the wrestling school so I didn't have to be before this board. But, you know, you guys have to think about, you know, what you, you want to do. I think at the end of the day, the, the, I'll get an approval from the planning board. We're not really asking for much with the, the actual shul and parsonage.
Well, you are asking for much, because this illegal structure has been operating for years, and without getting any approvals whatsoever. You can't have a lawless society like this. You can't do what you want to do because you feel like it. I understand there are some extenuating circumstances, the, the rabbi is handicapped, whatever, but you, you can't do this in, in a town. It's just.
I don't think you can really look at the past. I think you have to look at the application before you, and based on the municipal land use law, has the applicant approved their case? Not, I'm sorry they're here five years later than they should have been. You have to look at what's before you, and your, your job is only to enforce the land use ordinances, not the building code, not anything else. We've dealt with a whole municipal court proceeding, that's a whole different issue. We've basically satisfied them at the municipal court level. That case will be dismissed if and when we get an approval.
I don't know how you guys feel about this.
I've been doing a lot of thinking on, on, on this also, and I'm going to repeat. Excuse me, I don't know why, just shut it off. First, the, the congregation should have the temporary use on the property to practice their religion and use the shul. As we just said, that the owner constructed the, the tent without construction department approval, without plans, without permits, and so on. We don't know about the safety. There's also a question of, of the state's fire codes. All of this comes into play, and the tent itself, in, in my opinion, is, can possibly be an unsafe building. And as I said in another, before, the other application, safety is a priority, particularly when you have so many people attending the shul, because you have not only the congregation, the, the people who were there praying, but you had their wives, and you had their kids, and you're talking about over 200 people possibly who belong to this congregation. When it comes to the wrestling school, what you're asking for is basically putting a commercial property in a residential zone. I don't care what you call it, it's still a commercial property in a residential zone. When this variance was granted in 2009, and I was on the board and I voted for it, because he then wanted to use the school, wanted to use the school as a home occupation, and we approved it, that even though it wasn't in the home, we gave enough leeway where he was able to put it further back on the property. But once he sold, sold the property, that variance ended. And when Mr. Rivera came up, he told us, well, he signed, signed a lease, and he thought that was okay. Well, signing a lease doesn't grant him a variance, and while he was in the process of doing this and continuing his business, he should have consulted with his attorney at the time. My feeling is that the tent is unsafe, and the best place to put the shul is in the building that's holding the wrestling school. It's 3,200 square feet, gives more room than the tent does, and the home should remain the principal use, the, the shul should be the conditional use, and the tent should be removed along with the fence and all the other structures around it. When it comes to traffic and, and parking, basically parking, I don't even know if you have to go to, to a separate, a separate meeting where we, where we have to have another, another plan. Most of this could be worked out by the professionals. So my feeling is that the school doesn't belong there, and, and the shul should go into the building where the shul is, and it certainly simplifies everything that you're trying to do. Basically, the prime thing that you want on the properties for these people to have a place to worship until the permanent synagogue is completed.
So I'd just like to address two comments that you made. One, the tent itself, the structure, again, is not within the jurisdiction of the zoning board. You have a building department. I told you the last time, during the municipal court proceedings, we were required to go out and have everything in the tent inspected. On June 5th, I sent Dawn a copy of that report that was used during the zoning board proceedings, which basically says that everything related to the tent and the structure, the plumbing, the gas, the electric, the heating and ventilated, the interior safety, all was in compliance. We then had the fire guy go out and take a look at everything, and he issued a letter, let me see if I can find it, dated December 11th, saying, "No violations were found during this inspection." So there's been an unofficial inspection of the facility. It is safe. So again, that really, again, how we, what we use, what structure we use on the site is not a zoning issue. You're, you're regulating or deciding whether or not the use can go there. You're look, supposed to be looking at the two variances that we asked for, not the use. The governing body already said the use is okay. You never look at what buildings that they're going in. Now, with regard to Mr. Rivera, it's really a legal issue, right? The use is exactly the same since 2009, there's been no change. He has kept it and stuck with the use that was permitted in the 2009 approval. So the way the wrestling school is operating, you're really making a distinction without a difference.
You know, I read there was a report. The use is not the same because he had a home occupation use. He doesn't live in the house, so how could, he uses it for the same reason.
But the use that's going on in the pole barn is exactly what's been going on for the past 16 years, without incident, without complaint.
I read all the reports that you had, that you submitted, and I have a problem with those, because were those the people that, that did the work?
No, he was hired separate, he didn't do any of the work, he came out to review it and to certify. There's, okay, again, you're focusing on an issue that is beyond the jurisdiction of this board. The safety of the tent is not the board's concern.
Excuse me, Mr. Peters, I'm sorry, Mr. Peters?
If I might, just, Ms. Jennings sort of went into that lawyer mode where they start to testify a little. I understand your argument that there's no distinction, but would you agree that the wrestling school exists because they got home occupation variance?
Correct, I don't dispute that.
And they don't meet the condition of that variance anymore?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, once the permanent structure is built, is the tent going to be removed?
Correct.
And some variance pertains to the tent, correct?
Correct, one of the side yard setbacks, and the fact that the tent is behind the single-family home, which is considered a parsonage now, that makes a single-family home in the front yard, accessory structures aren't supposed to be in the front yard. So those are related to, so once the tent goes away, those variances go away.
Oh, okay, that's what my question was, so once they're gone, it's going to be?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
What's the timeline?
As soon as the shul is built, we're waiting to get the building permit. It takes about 18 months to build the structure.
I apologize, I, I'm, I'm trying to listen and take notes. We started talking about sort of post-removal of the tent, and Ms. Jennings, you suggested, I didn't under, I didn't hear what you said about what happens with the existing house when the tent comes down?
It goes back to being a single-family home.
Ms. Jennings, my understanding was that, following Mr. Peters' expression, that there, you want to have a continuation of two principal uses, but you're shifting, when the tent goes down, the application is to shift the two principal uses to the wrestling school and to the residents. Is that correct?
Correct.
But the wrestling school is going to be classified for the purposes of zoning a...
Quasi-public conditional use, permitted in the zone.
Quasi-public and/or private recreation club?
Correct.
Mr. Peters, I have a question. Over the course of the time I've been on the board, the comment has been made multitudinous time on different applications that once the variance is granted, it goes with the land. Correct?
That's generally correct.
You could put a sunset provision in the... You could put a sunset provision in the resolution of approval expiring it.
As I understand...
Just for the record, I get yelled at when I give you your answer, right? When I don't let you answer the question, you usually yell at me afterwards, right? Just want to make sure you take her outside afterwards as well.
I apologize.
I knew that was coming. Sorry.
And it is, my understanding that the request would be that the approval for the shul would be one which would sunset upon, I guess, the certificate of occupancy for the Brewers Bridge structure and that then that approval for that use would sunset and there, that would also be the trigger for the identification of a single-family home as the second principal use on the property.
Correct.
Would there be a period of time within which the tent would need to come down? We said, we said that the use sunsets when they get a CO for the other building. My question is, does the tent need to come down as part of this sunsetting provision?
Yes. So I'd recommend probably 60 days after the CO because you need time to get people there and know what the weather is going to be like.
Okay, so we, I'm sorry.
Will there be some number of days? The suggestion is that 60 days would be reasonable.
So just to be clear, we've heard in the past that variances go with the land. In this case, we would put in a sunset provision, if it should be approved, we would put in a sunset provision, which would mean that the variances would go away within a specified amount of days that would be agreed upon in the resolution. That if the variances would go away, we leave it to the shul. But then we also have to address what's going to be what structure afterwards, correct?
Right, so, so it would be, I mean, and I just want to be clear. The variances do run with the land.
Right.
However, if, this is essentially a temporary variance for a temporary structure. So the, if the board chose to approve essentially as asked, it would be conditioned on the, making the two principal uses for the period, the initial period, the temporary shul and the wrestling school. And that upon the acquisition of a certificate of occupancy for the permanent shul Brewers Bridge, that the variance, the use variance, allowing for the temporary structure and the use of the shul as a principal use would terminate and the tent would have to be taken down within, the suggestion was 60 days of the issuance of that certificate of occupancy and there would be violation. And then upon the removal of the tent and the expiration of that temporary variance relief, that there would be a change of a single-family home from an accessory use as a parsonage to the temporary shul to a second principal use in accompaniment with the principal use of the wrestling school. That would be the request and the condition of approval.
Oh, I'm sorry Gina, go ahead.
That's okay. Fully aware that we could pretty much write whatever language we want in the resolution pending, or should the board approve the application. I just want to clarify on the record, my records show two different things. One is a letter from our previous counsel, which is a letter to Ms. Jennings regarding that sunset provision, or we also have a reference through our RVE letter referencing Code 244-171, which gives a one-year timeline, which then would kind of gently ask the applicant to come back to the board prior to that one-year expiration to then ask for an extension. Just wanted to put that on the record as kind of a little bit more of a, more enforcement, a little bit more teeth in the game versus just, hey, yeah, in discussion, we thought it would take 18 months and it may take a little bit longer. Just wanted to point that out to the board as well. And if we want to put on the record, I mean, again, we can kind of do a little bit of both if you'd like, however we want to write it into a resolution, but that is a tool that we have at our disposal.
Mr. Peters? This application is just for use, conditional use, bulk variance. There's not a site plan being proposed this evening, correct?
That is correct.
Are you proposing to come back with a site plan?
Yes.
So I guess the next question, as respectfully as I can ask it, is in what timeframe are we going to get to a point where doing the site plan becomes impractical because the other site's going to get built? Or do we still need to follow the site plan through to fruition because of the wrestling facility? I guess I want to make sure that's clear so that someone can enforce the resolution. In other words, you get a use variance and you don't do all the homework for the site plan in case you don't get the use variance, that's permissible under the land use law. Now the question is, how quickly do we expect the site plan to progress if we know that we're already getting ready to start the construction of the building that would make the tent structure moot?
So that's a good question and Mr. Halper just told me that he is working on doing the site plan and he would, it would take no longer than six months for him to file the site plan application.
And that, I guess the other question is, even if, I guess I want to make sure that the sunset provision talks about whether or not there's a need for a site plan if the tent's not there. In other words, is the site plan still required for the wrestling school in the back? I know you said you don't represent them, but it's part of this application and I don't want, while we, we're ahead of schedule with the new shul, so we'll be taking the tent down in a year so we don't have to come back for a site plan. I think somehow they're inextricably intertwined and I want to make sure that it's clear on the record what's going to be proposed and in what timeframe.
So I think when we come back with a site plan, it would be like a phase one, phase two. So obviously the wrestling school needs the site plan because they anticipate being there.
I just wanted there to be an answer on the record.
So if the tent is phase one and we get the site plan approved, I would think that depending on where we are with the permanent shul, we may or not, not proceed with the actual improvements and just do the improvements that satisfy the wrestling school.
But the responsibility to do the site plan and install the improvements associated with the wrestling school would still be on the owner of the property, is that correct?
Oh, that's an interesting question. I don't know the answer to that, he's in here.
I don't either, that's why I asked you. I think that's got to get worked out if we get to the point of resolution.
Wouldn't it be the owner though? I mean, in all practicality, the owner's not the one living in the house.
It's part of this application.
I would say the applicant who happens to be the property owner.
Correct, well, that's what I was getting at. The homeowner is the applicant, so I would think that the responsibility falls on them.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to throw this out there. 18 months from now?
Thank you. I appreciate, we sort of got through the use issues, the sunset issues, and the only question I have for Mr. Taikina is that we sort of painted ourselves in a corner with having, with calling the tent the principal structure because it's a shul and it's an inherently beneficial use and because of its location, we need a bulk variance and because of its location, the existing house becomes accessory and requires a variance for being in the front yard. So I guess my question is, is there anything that stops the applicant from providing the tent in a location which would not require that relief? Can you put the tent in front of the house at a setback that wouldn't require variance?
We might have to have Mr., can you tell or Mr. Halper?
Probably not, given the existing condition of the driveway. I do not believe we could locate the tent far enough south to not require the same setback variance that we require with its current location.
No disrespect intended. They have concrete sidewalks and air conditioning, are they going to relocate it all?
My point was is that, my point was is that because of where the tent got built, it requires a side yard setback.
Correct.
Can you move it so you don't require a side yard setback? That's question one. Next question is, is because it's behind the house, the house as, as the applicant's proffered, becomes an accessory use to the tent. And so as opposed to asking him to move the house, the house is the thing that's been here the longest, could the tent be placed in front of the house in a conforming location? That, as part of variance applications, you look at the alternatives. What could you do to limit the number of variances? So my simple question to the applicant, and tonight we have the planner as the witness, is could you put the tent in a conforming location?
And I, and I guess my response was based, I'm looking at the pictures thinking, "How?" I guess that's what brought about my response.
Yes, but I think the question was for Mr. Taikina.
No, I mean, I let him, no, no, I'm responding to his answer and in all due respect, I, I can't imagine how you do that. I mean, look at all that's entailed with this tent.
But also, we don't allow fences in front yards. Why would we allow a tent in a front yard? It's, I think that's a viable...
I got to ask my question, Mr. Taikina gave a response, I don't have any more questions for him right now, thank you.
And what on, what on the off chance, somehow, some way, financing or whatever is being used to build the new shul falls through, what happens then?
Well, because we're talking about sunset provisions, we're talking about, we're using the word temporary, what happens?
Well, I think, I think that that was Gina's point in suggesting that any condition be that within a certain amount of time, just was made in two year, there's been another reference to 18 months, if they were required to return whether through the board to ask for any extension beyond that 18-month period. It's, the things that the board can consider, Mr. Rivera just referenced the fact that we, you know, the board has considered, been requests for fences in the front yard, they're asking for structures in the front yard, that is something to consider. I know that there's a lot of frustration regarding the fact that this was done and the proper procedures were not followed at the time. Ms. Jennings is correct in that the board has to consider the application before it now. The other part of that is to Mr. Peters questioning that, you know, we're taking the application as it is now. So there's the practical considerations given the way that it's been done, but you are being asked to approve these very specific variances regarding, you know, allowing for the temporary shul, which is permitted use in this location with these variances. That is the questions before you now, in addition to the questions arising from the wrestling school and the idea of the two principal uses and the shifting of those and to Dr. Hoffstein's point, to changing the nature of the variance for the school, which was there as a home occupation, everyone is in agreement, that is no longer an available variance, but the school has existed in that time, do you want to take that into consideration and grant a different kind of variance, given the setbacks that are required for those? So those are the questions really before the board at this time.
Thank you.
Can I just ask?
Absolutely.
Clarification. So bottom line, this applica, does it include the school? So you're saying you're not here to testify, you don't represent the school?
But the application does include...
Include the school, yes.
And several forms of relief pertaining to the school.
So if I have questions pertaining to the school?
All those questions were answered at the last hearing. We had Mr. Rivera here testify.
I appreciate that, we don't know what those questions are.
You gotta let me finish my question. Or you're going to get in trouble. No, so, let me know. When Mr. Rivera was here?
He's right there.
Okay, there it is, okay. Oh, even better. So it was this concept of quasi-public, what, how, can you define that for me? What's a quasi-public? What makes it quasi-public?
It's in your ordinance, under conditional use requirements, Section 244-129, you allow quasi-public and private club recreation areas.
Right.
It's a wrestling school club, private recreation, it fits right in...
Because my, why is it not a private school? Why is it not a public school? But it's a quasi-public?
No, no, you permit as either quasi-public or private club recreation area. So it's under the private club recreation area.
Got it.
We were just citing to the whole section of the ordinance, which is entitled quasi-public and private club recreation areas.
Okay, so, so, okay, so if we just label it private, same deal, I don't have to go into that definition. And so what makes it private is because the owner is a private owner or, because there's public people going in there, it's being used by the public?
I don't have, Mr. Peters, you have the ordinance, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, the whole thing.
It's a privately owned club.
Okay, yeah, the reason I ask those questions is, so I have to agree with Dr. Hoffstein that, to me, I'm just looking at it, right? So I'm trying to figure out the rules, but it just seems like it's a commercial use in a residential area. Now, you're going to tell me, well, that's short-sighted because you got to look at all these legal things. So that's why I'm trying to ask these questions. But the fact is, that's what I see.
It's a recreation use, which is permitted in the zone. I don't know how else to, the town permits it.
But Mr. Martins, don't forget, it was approved, there was a variance granted for the wrestling school as a home business. So it's still, it was a, I guess the point I'm trying to be clear on, it was a business then as well.
Yes.
When that variance was granted.
Right, which that's ended, right? Mr. Hoffstein explained to us how that was approved, although they weren't happy about it, but it was approved.
I don't think we heard that, but let's be clear, I don't think we heard they weren't happy about it. I don't think that was on the record, I don't think that's what we heard.
All right, so let's take that off the record. It was approved.
It was approved.
It had to come for a variance and it was approved.
Correct.
And the idea of that approval wasn't that that was going to live forever?
Well, it was, it was approved as, I mean, it's early forever, it was a home business, a home occupation, so as long as we went with occupation of the home, it was a business variance.
Okay, so now, that's gone, because it's not, right? So just like we were told before, don't consider the fact that before it was illegal and you did all this stuff, consider what's in front of you now. So what's in front of me now is that that use of a commercial entity is not approved variance.
That, there is no existing variance for that.
Right, no matter what happened in the past.
Correct.
Okay, because you can't have your cake and eat it too. You don't consider the past or you do consider the past.
So you don't consider the fact that they had variance, but you want to consider, you can legitimately consider that it has been in operation without incident because it was originally functioning under an existing invalid variance granted by this board, which ended at some time upon sale. When he sold the property and moved out of the house.
Right, okay.
Then that variance terminated because it was based on home occupation.
Right, and so what I'm being told by, because the rules are, if it's private or quasi- Right, and so what I'm being told by, because the rules are if it's private or quasi-public, then it doesn't even matter. It's allowed, right?
Gene, but it was approved as a business. It was never approved as a quasi-ended.
No, that's right. Today, and there's no question. Today, as we stand here, it does not have variance protection. That ended when, as you said, when he sold the house, sold the property and moved out of the house, that variance ended. So he does not have a variance right now. He is asking to come in on what is being described as quasi-public or private club or school, which is a get this right, is a conditional use in the zone. But it doesn't mean all of the conditions and that's, those are the variances that have been requested.
So that creates a problem. If we vote on this application, what happens if we want the shul and we want to hear further testimony on the school, on the business?
Yep.
How do you vote on that? As Mr. Rudex said, we should be splitting this up into separate applications.
It's two issues.
Agreed.
And that is absolutely a way that you can perceive, you say that the application has been presented as a whole and that, you know, if you consider it as a whole, then you're, you know, voting essentially to deny it because it has been presented as a whole application and you believe that it should have been two separate applications. To Ms. Jennings's point, at that point, the shul application would go to the planning board and then the wrestling school would have to come here.
So be it then. That's how it has to be.
Right, right.
Are we just going to go to the 2009 resolution when the board made specific findings regarding the wrestling school, which I think you should keep in mind because as was testified to, the hours of operation have remained the same as well as the days of operation. You, board said, and I think Mr. Hoffstein, you might have been on the board, found that the wrestling school will promote the best interest of the community and is a good cause to help neighborhood children. And the granting of this application can occur without substantial detriment to the public good and has been determined that it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance and the benefits of this proposal outweigh its detriment. So you already made those findings regarding the wrestling school. Nothing about the wrestling school has changed. It is the same operation, the same operator.
It's not a home business anyways.
That's fair, that's fair, yeah.
It's a major change.
So at that point, you came and you called that school a commercial entity and that's why you needed a variance, correct?
I was not here in 2009 for this application. It was considered, again, a home occupation, but the school, it operates the same. There's, Mr. Rivera just doesn't live in the house on the property anymore.
My simple question is, the variance was because it was considered commercial, correct? We don't know?
Right, in 2009, so a home occupation.
When the variance was granted.
A home occupation in a term is, you know, some sort of commercial or professional activity. So at that time, it was granted on those terms. Now the question is that the, whether it is, you know, it's not being a home occupation and it's not coming in as an application for a commercial activity. It is coming in as an application for recognition as a quasi-public and private club, which is, you know, includes clubhouses, parks, playgrounds, tennis courts, swimming pools and other such activities which may be permitted as a conditional use in those zones, including this one, and then it has the conditions. I know there is a desire to, you know, handle something in full right now. I don't know if there, what the, well, the board is, I will point it as ten after eleven.
Yep, to just, no disrespect, let me just finish my question if I could. Yeah, I actually didn't even ask it yet. So I agree with everything you just said, right? So my question is simple. What has changed from the first time you asked for a variance where we called it a commercial use? The use hasn't changed. You just testified to that. Nothing has changed. But now it's called the quasi-private. What's different?
Because in your ordinance, under the definition of home occupation, it says such gainful employment or occupation of one or more members of the resident family. So the family has to live on the site in the home in order for it to be a home occupation. They don't live in the home, so it doesn't fall under your definition of home occupation simply because nobody lives in the home that works at the wrestling school.
So what's changed is he doesn't live there anymore.
Correct.
I got you. I'm with you. Okay, I understand. I still don't like the fact that we're combining these two things, so. But at least now I'm on the same page.
I feel like I have struggled with this application for months, over a year, actually. But I understand that as a zoning board, we do not have responsibility or authority to enforce anything. So my struggle was when they were operating illegally, it was erected illegally. They put in sidewalks, all those things. I've had to recognize that we can't do anything about that, right? Like you said, I can't consider that in my decision. What I'm struggling with is, though, because something was erected illegally, we're now and I understand that Mr. Rivera moved before anybody said that, say that, I get it. But I'm struggling with the fact that the wrestling school is being punished when, I have to agree with Ms. Jennings, nothing's changed except the fact that he doesn't live there. There's been no, hold on a second, please. There's been, as far as I know, when I spoke to Jeff about this a year ago, there's been no complaints, there's been no changes, there's been no problems. So I'm struggling with the fact that, I understand he moved, I get it. But what has changed in the operation on that piece of property? Nothing from that perspective. So that's been, that's been something I've struggled with. I have to recognize except the fact that we can't enforce anything. But I'm struggling with the fact that that business, that, and it is a business, it is a, to be clear, it is a business. Whether he lives there anymore or not, it is still a business. But he's the one, that wrestling school is the one being punished now.
I actually That one of the things definitely changes now, you have 200 people attending the shul. So you have more density.
But they're not there at the same time according to the hours of operation at the last meeting. Correct, I'm sorry, forgive me, correct?
Okay.
So just let's start with because we're talking about a lot of things, but I don't know that this case, that the case is rested.
I actually have a question for Ms. Cipriani. Is that entirely true that the zoning board, I understand the enforcement issue, but are we allowed to actually grant a variance on something that we've never seen a site plan on for in the beginning? And that's my question because when I actually went and I read the law and before I was about to vote on this, the way I kind of interpreted it is the zoning board absolutely has the right to deny a variance when there was never an initial site plan presented to us. So that's my question for you on a legal matter.
No, no, I mean, you can come in and ask for a determination on use at all. Then to your point, you know, the total operation, you need to come in and have a site plan. It is not that the application is in problem in the absence of a site plan. You can't ask for determination of use, except for that. But the total operation, so again, a simpler way to say, this is I think everyone can agree, an unusual application in all regards. But a simpler way to think about it is somebody bought a piece of land and they wanted, it was residential district and they wanted to put in a commercial operation. They could come in and ask for permission of a commercial application on whether basically or not is this site suitable for this use on ready-to-use. And you could decide that would not give you the ability to operate there. They would have a chance on an initial question and then they could come back and cite plan and then with that ask for other. This is a tricky one because it's such an unusual series, sequence of events, combination of events. You know, we have the wrestling school that is existing use of the property that was originally permitted. It's not permitted, but it became an illegal use because it was operated in a home occupation period. Then that ended and then this period where it continued to operate but didn't have an appropriate variance. Now it's coming in for the appropriate variance, but it is tied with purposes of this application to the temporary shul, which you get an unusual thing. It is a permitted use, it's in, to Mr. Peters' point, it's reserved in the wrong place because now it's permitted use, it's inherently beneficial use, but it requires these other, well, variances because of the location of the property. And then that's temporary, so it's a very unusual series of events. It makes it even harder to sort of understand that you can't ask for this, you have to. And they can't ask for it. So I'm going to ask Ms. Jennings, we've had a lot of conversations with the board. Are, do you have the world of testimony at all?
The only testimony was to address Mr. Peters' question regarding the parking. I would like Mr. Halpert to square that away because I believe he said there was an issue with it, so I want to make sure the record's clear.
So I, from the moderates, I'm here on the board. What I believe is the board is not interested in taking additional testimony at 11:15 and I don't. So I'm going to put a bit of that on, going to have to be carried again.
Okay. Probably would take one minute to answer the question, but.
We're going to open, we're going to open it to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward to make comments at this time, please do so.
There seems to be a glitch in the system. This was illegally built, but two years ago, nobody saw anything or says, "Hey." But to have these inspections, oh, we passed electrical, we passed. How could they pass if it wasn't approved? There is a glitch in the system that got bypassed somehow. And that needs to be looked at. How can someone get an electrical inspection on something that wasn't even approved? That's all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I?
Ms. Gina.
Can I answer his commentary on that? Hi, dear. So they didn't get approval through the township? What Ms. Jennings had read was they had their own private inspection done just for sake of saying that here's a licensed contractor with this specialty, they're certifying without a township approval that it is safe and that it was run through. The way Jackson Township works, the process is you cannot go to construction department and fill any type of zoning per, um, excuse me, any type of construction permit without zoning approval first. So we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. We are demanding that they get their inspections and their proper building permits, but this is their first step.
But to come here with dirty hands, go back to square one, tear the thing down, let's start with a clean slate and do it the right way. Not come and say, "Oh, we got permits approved." That's like rubbing it in your face. It's frustrating because it's not just here, it's happening on other issues that I've brought up, but it's not for tonight. Other issues that were denied by the board and it's been operating for a year and a half.
So obviously, that's a different issue, but the law does permit people to come and make these applications and incur even other
So just to be clear regarding those other issues, you can always contact home enforcement and let them know.
Oh, I have, it's up to them.
I would recommend you keep doing that.
I talked to a little business administrator already.
Gina, did you happen to cross the date?
No, sorry. Dawn had notated that anything to be carried, please use the August 20th date. I don't know if we want to wait that long. August 6th has three applications currently on it. Might be kind of large applications, though, so I don't know how much further time required for this application.
Yeah, and I have a hearing on August 6th already.
Okay.
Somewhere else.
August 6th is out.
No, not here, a different town.
July 16th is reorgan. We already have four applications on there.
I think she said August 20th unless you guys are doing hearings on Saturdays. Well, we just noticed for this hearing, so I have to notice again? I mean, I'm, why? That normally you don't have to renotice. Yes. Thank you.
So application number two for 820. No notice required. Thank you, Gina.
Motion? Everybody's in favor.